I'd like to call the meeting to order. The roll call, please.
Commissioner Atwood.
Here.
Commissioner Brady.
Here.
Commissioner Glickman.
Here.
Commissioner Petrie.
Here.
Commissioner McCarthy.
Here.
And Mayor Hing.
Here. If we please stand and we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. All right. Before we get started with the agenda, which, or the, yeah, the approval of the agenda, I'd like to open with, with a few remarks regarding the last meeting. I want to provide a clear explanation of the rules that govern this commission and correct several misunderstandings that arose from our last meeting. This is not directed toward any one individual. It's provided so that our meetings proceed in an orderly, transparent, and legally compliant manner. The City Commission operates under a defined hierarchy of authority in this order. First, the City Charter. Second, the Rules and Procedures of the City Commission. And third, Robert's Rules of Order, the latest addition, which is 12th. This applies only when our Charter or Rules do not address an issue. These documents define the roles, rights, and limitations of commissioners, staff, and participants. To ensure clarity going forward, I will address several misconceptions that circulated publicly following the November 17th meeting. First, whether the chair may make a motion. There's no Charter provision, no rule, and no section of Robert's Rules that prohibits the chair from making a motion. In small deliberative bodies such as ours, the presiding officer retains full participation rights of member.
Point of order.
Sure.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Am I recognized?
Mr. Brady, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I, I don't believe that we are a small board.
According to Robert's Rules, a board of five is a small board. Point of order is unheard at this time.
I am, I am, I appeal. I appeal the ruling on the chair.
Please cite your authority, Mr. Brady.
To appeal?
Yes. Please cite the authority that you're appealing under.
I, well, I can read from Robert's Rules if you'd like to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Chapter and subsections.
Sure. Yes, please, let's go ahead and go to Robert's Rules. And, sorry, one second. We need to go to chapter 49 and verse 20, and verse, that's fun. Chapter forty, chapter 49, point? Section, thank you. Two, one, 21. Procedure in small boards, which I believe is what you're claiming, even though, I guess my argument would be that, like, we write laws, we tax people, we're an incorporated municipality. So the informal stature of our board, even though it is six members, doesn't really apply. It says not more than about a dozen members are present. But it would also say that motions don't need to be seconded. It would say that informal discussion is permitted, and if the chairman is a member, I think this is what you're talking about, if the chairman is a member, he may, without leaving the chair, speak in informal discussions and debate and vote on all questions. But you, sir, cannot vote on all questions, you can only break a tie.
Well, I appreciate that, because I didn't say that I could vote.
Point of order. Point of order.
Mr. Brady.
Is he allowed to debate me on a procedural issue?
If he's recognized the point of order, you can speak about it. If you want me to read from Robert's Rules about the small board, though, I can.
One moment. A point of order is addressed to the chair. Questions are directed at the chair, and the chair directs them to the person that is going to answer the question. You can't just ask the attorney directly from your seat without asking through the chair, okay? I recognize your, I recognized your point of order, and I'm saying that it's unheard. I don't think that you're interpreting correctly, and you're raising a point, you're raising a point of order that isn't relevant to the situation.
I appeal, I appeal.
Your point of order is directed at my ability to vote, not my ability to make a motion, which is what I'm addressing in this conversation right now.
I appeal the ruling of the chair. This board gets to decide, not you, this board gets to decide.
Then let's put that to the vote.
What are we, can?
Go ahead.
I'd like clarity. You said that you were allowed to make motions. He's saying you're not allowed to vote.
Correct.
That was his words. Yours was motion. Two different issues, voting, motion. What are we voting on?
Right now, his point of order, he's appealing the decision of the chair. The decision of the chair is that his point of order is unheard because it's not relevant to the conversation at hand. The conversation at hand is, I'm correcting a misconception that I can make a motion or not. And he's saying, point of order, according to the rules, you're not allowed to vote, which is a completely separate topic.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Brady.
I have a, we're now stacking points of order. My contention is that you're not even allowed to debate in a procedural issue because you're supposed to be an impartial chair, and now you want to debate from the chair, and you want to sit in the chair at the same time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
My understanding that this is just a statement. It's not a debate, he's just reading a statement, and he's presiding over this meeting. So I say just let him finish what he has to say, and then you can debate it, you know, whenever you want. I just, we have people here waiting for us to convene, so.
I appreciate that. Ms. Petrie. To her point, Mr. Brady, this was a statement, not a debate.
I have appealed the decision of the chair, Mr. Chair. You must vote on that, we must vote on it.
And I was calling for a vote, but there continues to be deliberation between yourself and other commissioners, which I'm entertaining at this time. And I'm going to also call on Commissioner Atwood.
Yeah, I will, I will second it.
All right, it's been seconded. Yes, can you please restate your motion, your, your point of order? Your appeal. What decision are you appealing?
I have appealed the authority of the chair to debate on a procedural issue.
All right. Motion to appeal the authority of the chair to debate on an issue has been presented by Commissioner Brady and seconded by Commissioner Atwood. Is there any discussion? Starting with Commissioner McCarthy.
We might, we might want to let her read what it says, because she looked it up.
Yeah.
As to the small board?
Well, the first one, the first issue was, is the mayor allowed? I'm not asking about vote this and that, we're talking about, we're in a debate now. Apparently, we're now squeezing the lemon that the mayor's supposed to shut up, be quiet, and just move on. And it's, I'm getting frustrated, okay? And I, I, it's getting old. So the question is, is he allowed to, they're allowed to ask him questions, he's allowed to ask back. They're allowed to have dialogue.
So if you have the point of order, then you have the ruling on it, and you can allow people to interject and give opinions, that's permitted by Robert's Rule, which I think you did too, several.
And he's allowed to have, he's allowed to speak backwards. He's not just supposed to be a punching bag, he's allowed to speak back.
So you've stated your point of order, you've allowed people to make debate on that order, and I think everything's been complied with Robert's Rules to this point.
Correct. But then after I made a decision.
Yes.
Which is my duty as the presiding officer. When the commissioner doesn't like my decision, he appeals.
Correct.
And after he appeals, he states what he's appealing, and then he has it seconded, and then we go to a vote.
I just wanted to know what, what are we voting on?
We're, we're voting on, again, go ahead, Mr. Brady.
Would you, would you like me to rephrase?
Yes, please.
Restate, okay.
Yep. For clarity, for.
May I speak to Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Okay. My, my first point of order, I appealed. And then when he wanted to interject into that appeal, it's now procedural. And he's sitting in the chair, and he wants to debate. He is allowed to debate, but he has to get out of the chair. The chair should remain impartial on procedural orders.
Do.
I'm, I'm going to address that right now, and I'm going to defer to you. Because I do believe that part of small deliberating bodies, as, as the presiding officer is one of those members, as long as inside the bylaws, we don't have any restriction of a member's rights. In small deliberating bodies such as ours, I retain all those rights except those that are modified by our own bylaws. If that's the case, and my understanding is correct, and you can confirm that and speak more to that, maybe, then I think that the point of order can, can be unheard at this point, and that would be my decision. Can you please clarify?
So, and I'm reading from the example, just to be very clear, we'll be here all day. Before rendering your decision, the chair can consult with a parliamentarian, which if there is not one. The chair can also request the advice of experienced members, but no one has the right to express, express such opinions in the meeting unless requested to do so by the chair. You've recognized people, and they've spoken. Even if you were in doubt as to how to rule, you can submit to the assembly for the decision if you have not. No appeal can be made from the decision of the assembly itself. But this question is open to a debate whenever an appeal would be. So a question submitted by the chair to the assembly is open for debate. I think that's the point where we're at.
And the further, to further, I think, Commissioner Brady's appeal and disagreement is that he wishes that I would step away from the chair in order to continue to deliberate or debate with the rest of the body, which I don't think is necessary according to Robert's Rules. Can you clarify that?
Does he have to say, sit away, sit?
No, the, everyone can debate at this point.
Including the presiding officer of the chair. All right. Do you wish to continue with your appeal, Commissioner Brady?
I do. I, I would, I would go to chapter 43, subsection 29. It says, "If the presiding officer is a member of the society, he has as an individual member the same rights and debate as any other member, but the impartiality required of the chair in an assembly precludes his existing, his exercising these rights while he is presiding. Normally, especially in a large body, he should have nothing to say on the merits of pending questions. On certain occasions, which should be extremely rare, the presiding officer may believe that it is a crucial factor." Okay, so the, the crux of this whole thing, are we a small board or are we a large board? We tax people, we write laws. That guy can put people in jail under our authority.
I don't think that the size of quantity is relative to our responsibility and duty.
I, I just don't see us as an informal board.
Didn't say that it was informal, but we are a small board according to the numbers and Robert's Rules. In terms of how Robert's Rules quantify small, it's numerical, not depth of responsibility.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
No.
Mr. Chair, I do have the right to speak on all matters as provided by the charter.
You have the right to, you have the right to speak when you're spoken to and addressed by the chair.
I've been asked to be recognized.
Who asked you to be recognized?
I've asked to be recognized.
You do not have the right to be recognized.
Point of order.
We're not going to keep doing this.
I have the right to be asked to be recognized.
I find you to be dilatory at this point, Mr. Brady.
It's dilatory, not dilatory. I have the right to be recognized.
I find you to be out of order, Mike.
I raised the point of order, and I wasn't recognized.
We're going to have order first before we proceed.
Is my point of order recognized?
You're, again, you said you were stacking points of order at this point. We can't move further to vote on your appeal when you keep throwing more points of order on top of your points of order. Commissioner Brady, at this point, you're frustrating and delaying. He cannot speak in a body under deliberation unless a question is directed at him by the chair.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
No, you may not.
Am I supposed to be recognized if I'm asked to be recognized?
Commissioner Glickman, please.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'm not sure if it's appropriate, I would ask the parliamentarian, but I would really like to call the question.
I have one more question.
I'll have, first, to address the parliamentarian or the attorney in this case, Commissioner Glickman's call to, call to the question.
She's able to call the question?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Does it need a second?
What questions are we, what question are we calling?
Go to vote.
We're going to.
What are we voting on?
That has to be restated, it has to be restated.
Yeah. Yep. All right, so Commissioner Glickman, it has to be restated, and then we'll vote. Mr. Brady, would you like to restate your, your question?
There hasn't been a second.
I think just, Commissioner Atwood, seconded you.
Calling the question hasn't been seconded, I don't think we've decided whether or not we're a small board or not.
Commissioner McCarthy.
With all this holding, can we have her read what the definition is that we go by? And then we can vote to see if we like her definition, or if we'd like to make up a new definition. But this is a waste of these people's time. This is not what we ran for, this is not what we promised our constituents. Can we please let her read this? Will you please recognize her so she can read the numbers that are associated?
The chair recognizes the city attorney to clarify all items under the discussion right now, the questions that are on the table.
So this is from Robert's Rules. A board of any size is a permanent assembly, as explained here. Committees on the other hand are bodies that are often but not necessarily very small and that are subordinate instruments of an assembly or accountable to a higher authority in some way, that's obviously not here. Large boards generally follow parliamentary procedure in the same way as any other assembly. In small boards and in some committees, most parliamentary rules apply, but certain modifications permitting greater flexibility and informality are commonly allowed. In a separate part of Robert's Rules, it's, it's a small, it gives an example of under 12. There's no set number that, five or under is small, but the example given in Robert's Rules is under a dozen. Give you the site, but I don't have that one directly.
Okay. Does that answer your question sufficiently?
It does. I would believe, thank you so much for, for saying this, we are a small, we fall under 12. And, and we can have a huge budget, we can have, I don't, I am in disagreement. Maybe what we have to do is we have to vote on it.
Yes.
I don't know, he's over there shaking his head. We can stay here all night until 9:30 debating this issue, because there's a whole lot more to do.
Yep.
And so it seems a little silly that.
It's better to get things right than it is to get them fast.
It's, it's the ruling, it's the ruling of the chair. First and foremost, that your point of order was unheard. You appealed that.
I appealed it.
Then you stack points of order on top of each other. At this point, I have a second ruling, that you are being dilatory. And I'm not going to hear any more points of order from you because you are frustrating the process and delaying and wasting everybody's time here. And that's, that's how I find you. You can appeal that, and then we're going to, we're going to go ahead and vote on it. Please, Commissioner Brady.
I believe you are fundally, fundamentally rewriting the organization of this city. And I will stand my ground on this issue tooth and nail because this is a taxing municipality. We are not a small board, if you want to go after the planning commission, they follow these rules. This says motions don't, don't need to be seconded. Motions don't need to be seconded, really? Since when has that been a procedure of ours? This says, the chair may, this says that there's no limit to the number of times a member may speak to debate a question. So apparently, I can sit here and debate as much as I'd like, because there's no limit. But I'm not, I'm not going to sit down right now and say, sure, we're a small board, absolutely not. And if this body votes for that, I, I would question the legality. I don't think that we are right now in a position where we get to decide. We, we decide for ourselves, but you're taking one page out of the book and saying that you get to rewrite the entire way that we do everything around here based on one page. Ms. McCarthy's book is about 1,000 pages thick. I argue we go with 1,000 pages, not the one page.
All right. Well, I disagree with you, Commissioner Brady. Nobody's taken one page, and nobody's rewriting any rules. What we are doing is clarifying the rules and enforcing them as such, and how we understand them. As the presiding officer, I interpret those, and I make a decision. If you don't like the decision, you can appeal, which is what you have been done. And what we're going to do is vote on that appeal now. Can you please restate your appeal?
I think you should have the clerk do it.
Madam Clerk.
The authority of the chair to debate on a procedural issue.
Seconded by, by Commissioner Atwood. If we have no further discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
We can take a vote. Mr. Brady.
Mr. Chair, I'd like you to explain to us how you're going to both remain impartial on a decision and debate that decision at the same time. Without vacating the chair to the mayor pro tem to state your case, let us vote and then come back to the case, as it, as it would encourage you to do in chapter 43.
Remind me, didn't we cover this question about vacating?
The charter does, or the commission rules, sorry, do you have some about the mayor speaking? If I could do some of those. The mayor does have, mayor has a voice in all proceeding of commissions, but shall have no vote, except in the case of a tie, we know that.
The direct question from, or the, the point of order from Commissioner Brady in this case, the stacked point of order is, once we go into the appeal, and we have some discussion or deliberation about it, should the chair vacate the chair in order to have that deliberation, in order to remain impartial?
I believe the rule is, I have to look again, but unless you had the question and wanted to give the decision to the board, I believe you participate, I will look right now. Back to, and we did write an opinion letter, Mr. Brady suggested before I, that I reviewed it, and I, I would have a hard time believing this is something considered a small board, given this is not an informal procedure. We are, you have commission rules, you have standing commission rules, you need two-thirds of the body to vote for it. This is a parliamentary procedure, as is most municipalities. If you look at the Robert's Rules requirements for a small board, you know, those are things where we're not even standing up to start the meeting, this is an informal body, something like that, so that's my opinion on the large board versus small board.
Can you please give that again? You think your opinion is, and just without all of them, your opinion is, we are a what?
A large board.
Thank you.
And I, I think, you know, larger municipalities may have more than a dozen people, I don't, that's why Robert's Rules is a set in stone saying a dozen or more, because I don't think that would work for me.
And while, while your opinion is, is solicited and appreciated, at the end of it, we still get to decide for ourselves.
Well, subject to the, the commission rules and the charter and.
Yep. Correct. All right. Commissioner McCarthy, something more?
Yeah, I guess my question is, small means one thing, large means another. If we take all of these in the prism of us being a large.
Does it change the, does it change anything about the chair making a motion?
We're just trying to get to the meat and bones of it, so we can move through to the, to the agenda.
Yep.
And rather than massaging it, let's just cut it so that we have the definitions and we can move forward.
So the question is directed back to the attorney.
So if it was a small board, it would be much less formal, you, you know, we would, it would be very strange for.
But the question, the question that Commissioner McCarthy is asking, that even if we switch our understanding of small and large, and we decide for ourselves we're large, does it change anything in terms of the point of order that the?
Oh, not only the procedure of the meeting.
Yeah, that, that the chair doesn't retain the full rights of members of the body aside from what's written into the bylaws or adapted by the bylaws to change that, that member privilege?
No, because Robert's Rules is the very last thing that is, you have to go by everything else before that.
And so far, the only thing that we know for a fact is that the only membership privilege that has been modified by, for the chair in the city of LaPire, according to its charter and its rules and procedures, is the right to vote specifically, and only that right. And none of, none of the other. And none of the other rights.
There were some other things listed in our opinion letter about that, but you all have it in front of you. I'm happy to... There's someone's time reading it.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Whose was up first, Mr. Atwood or Mr. Brady?
I think mine. I bet I had my hand up.
Okay, then Commissioner Atwood, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to point out, it's now 24 minutes into the meeting.
There's a 30-minute time limit on debate. Go ahead.
I was speaking, please. I don't recall adjusting our agenda for mayoral comments at the beginning. We have an agenda here. We're not doing the business of the people right now. The whole reason why we're in this debate is because of you and we did not give you that authority in this agenda to add or subtract anything. So if we could get on with the vote, I would appreciate it and we can move on with the agenda.
Noted, Commissioner Atwood. I'll ask Commissioner Brady if he'd like to move forward with the agenda if I postpone any comments about the agenda. And... Or would you rather move forward with this conversation instead?
Are you asking me?
Yep. You have your hand up. So I'm assuming you have something to speak, but you also are the one pushing forward the point of order in the process. So does Commissioner Atwood's proposal satisfy your concern? Or do you want to continue?
No.
It does not? Okay. Do you recognize... Yep.
I believe the point that you're initially trying to push here is that you would get to introduce motions. Is that correct?
That as a member of this presiding body? Yes.
Okay. So my argument against that would be you are restricted from voting and making a motion is the first step in getting a vote to happen. They're connected. They're essentially the same process. Make a motion, get a vote. That's how it works. That's how we decide things as a board. So if you're able to make a motion, but you're not able to vote, you're starting a process that you can't finish. The Charter specifically says that you're not allowed to vote except in the case of a tie.
Voting and making motions are two distinct actions.
Can you cite your source, sir?
Roberts Rules. And when we were at November 17th meeting, our city attorney spoke up and said there appears to be a custom of the Mayor making motions to at least adjourn the meeting, which is a motion nonetheless. Go ahead.
You are allowed to adjourn the meeting at any point that the business is finished. If you would have gone out and adjourned that meeting and walked out of the room, Ms. Petrie would have taken over the Chair for you. You're not allowed to just decide that you can... You weren't allowed to decide that we were at recess. You declared last meeting, "We're at recess for two minutes," and then you walked out of the room. A recess and adjournment both require a vote of the body.
Can you cite your authority?
Gladly.
Mr. Chair, while he's looking something up, can I ask a question?
I have it right here.
Something else that I don't think we've spent enough time asking is this all kind of pivots on the question of whether you're a member of the body. Because the body is, as I understand it, is the Commission. You are not a member of the Commission. So any rule that you're citing that specifically indicates members of the body, I think we have to have a question of whether you are a member of the body.
That is a good question. And I think that there's plenty of information in our Charter, in our rules and procedures, and in Roberts Rules that indicate that a presiding officer or the Chair in this case, in a city, the title is Mayor, but at the end of it all, it all comes back to the presiding officer and the Chair. And it all indicates that that person, whoever that is, is a member of the body. There's nothing that says or says otherwise than that. So while I appreciate that you raised the question, I think it's answerable in the body of authority that we have inside of these books. Commissioner...
Mr. Mayor, you asked me to look something up.
Let's get to his.
Roberts Rules of Order, Chapter 25. It must be... It's talking about motions to go to recess. Number four, it must be seconded. Number seven, it requires a majority vote. Receses require a second... They require a motion, a second, and a vote. And to be honest, I think most of the problems that we're having here are your misinterpretations of the rules.
Yes, please.
In the past, I don't remember ever voting when Mayor Mark Court recessed for a moment. Somebody would ask and she'd recess. We never voted on a recess in the past. So if that's the custom...
We're at the end of the business.
I'm just saying.
It's not the custom.
I think we're being inconsiderate of other people.
I agree.
I'm embarrassed.
I feel completely considerate of the taxpayers and residents of this city that I do not yield.
Okay. I disagree with that statement, first of all, because I happen to see inside the packet that we use the taxpayers' money to get a legal opinion that both myself and the lawyer said previous to your request for that opinion that it was unnecessary. And the lawyer had offered a verbal...
The one that said that you don't get to make motions?
The lawyer had offered a verbal assessment that we didn't have to pay for to come to the same conclusion. We ended up with an eight-page document that we had to use taxpayer money on your request.
We're arguing about that right now.
To get. All right. But the point is, is that you are saying that you're considerate of the taxpayers' time and resources, and you're not. Okay? And you're not. And we have evidence of it inside of our packet right now today. Okay? So you're stacking points of orders to be dilatory...
Rule on them and vote on them, sir.
Over splitting hairs over whether or not we're a small board or a large board or whether I'm a member of this governing body or not, which I think we have plenty of resource to see that your interpretation is incorrect. And I've made a ruling on that.
And I've appealed.
And you've appealed. And we haven't even got to the vote yet. And so at this point in time, we're going to take that vote. And to rephrase your appeal, please, once again, because we've drifted away from it so many times and we're at the threshold of debate on a particular item. The clerk, please. The appeal.
Commissioner Brady?
I'm sorry. I need to hear the appeal again.
I need to hear what I'm voting on. No problem. The authority of the Chair to debate on a procedural issue.
Commissioner McCarthy.
For clarity, we're saying yes means he has the authority, no means he does not. Am I clear on that? I mean, we need to understand how we vote, what it means.
How are you phrasing your appeal? Are you saying the Chair does not have the authority? Is that the question? Is that what we're voting on?
Yes.
The Chair... The appeal is by Commissioner Brady. The Chair does not have the authority to deliberate...
On procedural...
On procedural...
Rulings. On debate during a procedural appeal.
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
The Chair does not have the authority or the ability to debate... I'm not... My appeal is that... And I don't know if I need to make this motion. You're the Mayor. You aren't allowed to debate on items that are procedural because you're the Chair and you're supposed to be impartial. Do you'd like me to find some Roberts Rules language?
You don't need to because I'll just say that I had no intention to debate on an issue that was procedural. You raised the appeal. You raised the appeal. I made a judgment. You didn't like it. We're appealing. I'm not debating. We want to go to vote.
Mr. Mayor, we vote. You run the meeting. We vote. We debate with each other. I don't debate you. I debate with these people. These people ask me questions. I ask them questions. You run the meeting. You had a chance to say no. And I appealed. And that appeal doesn't go to you and them. It goes to us, the five elected Commissioners of this body.
What makes you think that it went to me?
You started debating. You didn't want to raise a vote. You started debating with me.
Please.
I'm going to debate with you right now, Stefan. I'm going to ask a question. Is the bottom line here, you would like him to not read his comment? Is that what the crux of this is? Can you just get to the crux of it?
Three layers down.
Josh and you do not want him to read his comment. Is... Can we just...
You mean the comment that's not on the agenda that he just handed me a minute before that says, "I made 24..." That we made 24 mistakes during this meeting and you made zero? Zero mistakes, Mr. Mayor. Zero mistakes.
Yeah.
Your debate...
Everybody's out of order right now. Okay? Ms. Petrie hasn't finished her statement. She's the only one that's recognized by the Chair.
Please address it to the Chair.
This entire conversation has been out of order in several instances, not just by you, not just by you. Also you, also you. Okay? And we need to rein it in because we are past 30 minutes of this issue, which is all the time that we have, according to our laws, our rules, Roberts Rules, to give to an item before we just were done and we need to go to a vote. Ms. Petrie, please finish what you were saying.
I just don't know. I don't understand what he's referring to that got debated other than he didn't want you to make a comment. You're saying, "I'm going to make the comment." Is that what we're voting on? He didn't want you to make the comment. You were making it. What was the debate?
And it has escalated, correct? So Commissioner Brady, please answer the question from Commissioner Petrie.
He thinks he can vote... I'm sorry. He thinks he can make a motion. I appealed that. I don't think he can make a motion because he can't vote. When he made a ruling on it, I appealed his ruling to bring the decision before us. He then entered into debate about whether or not he had the authority to do that. And I don't think that he should have the authority to make a ruling and then get into debate about it. So the crux of the matter is whether or not the Mayor has the authority as the presiding officer, as the impartial presiding officer, as it states, if we're a large body, then we need to go with Chapter 43 and all the definitions of that. If he wants to debate on something, he needs to get out of the Chair. And then he can debate. And then we can vote on it. But right now, he's deciding. And then when I appeal, he's right back in there. Once I appeal past his decision, it should go to us.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Brady. And several times, we have tried to get to that vote, but we just can't get there. And I think it's time. Commissioner Atwood, did you have something to say?
I was just going to say that you're the Chair, so you can have his vote whenever.
Yeah.
We have the question. And now, so that we vote correctly, I'd like clarity. It's going to be read again. If we vote yes, does that mean we agree with Commissioner Brady? If we vote no, I need to understand the question and how a yes or no vote supports Mr. Brady or does not.
Commissioner McCarthy? I'm going to take the liberty to summarize the situation so that we can have the clerk document it properly and we can have a proper appeal and vote. Commissioner Brady is appealing my comment that the Chair has the privilege to make a motion. Okay? So the appeal is, no, the Chair does not have authority to make a motion. In the middle of trying to construct that appeal, have it documented, and have a vote, I made a comment to him and in the form of deliberation. And then he, point of order, threw a point of order on that and is appealing that. I'm happy to not be a part of that deliberation so that we can get to the initial appeal, which is, does the Chair have the authority to make a motion or not? And that's the question. But, Mr. Brady, I'm going to repeat your appeal in the way that I think is best for everybody to understand and vote on. Mr. Brady makes the appeal and moves that we vote on whether or not, yes or no, does the Chair have the privilege as a member of this body to make a motion or not? Yes or no? Does he have the authority to make a motion? It was seconded by Commissioner Atwood. Commissioner Brady, do you wish to adjust that?
I'm on my second appeal about whether you can debate. We haven't decided if you can even debate a procedural issue.
I'm withdrawing from debating at all so that it's not even an issue. If I decide I'm going to debate and you see a...
My objection is sustained.
Then you can make a point of order and we can do that.
My objection is sustained? So I don't need to appeal?
You don't need to appeal because I'm not debating.
Is my objection sustained? Do you concede that the Mayor is not able to debate procedural issues?
I don't know at this time, but it's an irrelevant... It's an irrelevant objection because I'm not debating with you. You can object to all kinds of things that aren't happening.
This sounds like a debate.
It's irrelevant. What is happening is I'm stating that as a member of this body, the Chair can make a motion. And that's what you're appealing. And that's what we're going to address. Go ahead.
So you're just ignoring my objection to the... My appeal to the ruling of the Chair? Or you're sustaining my appeal?
Mr....
Are you sustaining my objection or are you ignoring my objection?
We're going to... I'm going to decide to ignore it because it's been confused. There's been too much that has occurred during this last 30 minutes over an issue of appealing the authority to vote... Or not vote, to motion, to make a motion by the Chair. That's the original appeal. That's the topic at hand. I don't know, without looking back at the video, whether I started deliberating with you or not. I don't know if there, at this point in time, I don't know if there, at this point in time, because so much has happened and so much has been confused, I don't know if I made a, a ruling on
Why are you talking to me about this right now?
What I do know is that the original appeal has never been addressed, and I'm not debating with you on that appeal, so let's get it done. Let's get the appeal voted on.
If I may, I feel like this whole process would be a lot smoother if you stopped using the word "I" because you're the chair of this meeting. The chair of the meeting should remain impartial, at least until a point where we can conduct business. We can't conduct business because every time you say something, you give us your opinion. That's the problem. I don't think you should be doing that. I think you should just run the meeting according to the rules of order.
I'd like to run the meeting, Commissioner Brady, but you make it very difficult to do so with all of your objections and your opinions.
You're not gonna like where I booked the minutes.
So we're, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to move forward on your initial appeal. I'm sorry, Commissioner McCarthy.
Mr. Mayor, can you at least direct the clerk to note that my appeal is being ignored?
I don't see a basis for your appeal since you weren't being debated, and I'm not planning to debate you. I see a basis for your initial appeal of whether or not I have the authority to motion, to make motion. That's the appeal that we're gonna go with. Commissioner McCarthy?
Is, first I'm gonna ask a question. Is there a way that we can, A, move to a vote if, whether or not the mayor can make a motion?
That's where we're at.
When?
Mm-hmm.
And when we make that? And if it passes from this day forward, whether you want it or not, the mayor would then potentially be able to make motions because we voted on it. Number two, can we then make a second motion to decide if the mayor can debate? And then we go to vote? And if we go to vote and by some slippery slope, we all say yes, we then changed the rules from this day forward, I would hate to tell you this, but then all of your arguments would be moot. We can go forward on the votes. I'm more than willing to make a motion right now, both of them. But if they go through and they are voted yes, then from this day forward, that will be the new way the commission runs. Is that what you want? Is that the outcome you're looking for? Is this the hill you want to die on? I'm ready to take the, the flag up the hill. Mr. Mayor, I make the motion. Then we decide.
One second, we're, before you can make a motion, we need to address his appeal. The chair recognizes Ms. Sanchez.
To do what Commissioner McCarthy is requesting requires a two-thirds vote of the commission because it changes the rules and procedures of the commission. And that has to be done with the item added to the agenda prior to the agenda being published. Not added to the agenda in an open forum under an argument.
So.
Thank you.
So Commissioner McCarthy, the suggestions that you're making are altering the, the rules and regulation, which we have stipulation for two-thirds vote, which Mr. Francis provided in his opinion on a different issue that, that doesn't require a two-thirds vote, but he clarified that, 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 that item. So what we need to do is address his appeal, which is that I asserted that the chair retains the full privileges of the member of this body, which includes motions unless otherwise stated in our bylaws that we've adopted, which we only have the, the vote is modified to be a tiebreaker only. Commissioner Brady's assertion is that motions and votes are one and the same. My assertion is that they're not. He wants to appeal that decision that I've made. And so that's what we're going to vote on now. His appeal is, from Mr. Brady, the appeal in, in motion is the chair does not have the privileges of the body and may not make a motion. It was seconded by Commissioner Atwood. And now we're gonna take a roll call vote. Yes, he does not have that authority? Or no, he does have that authority? By the way that he's framed his appeal, yes, is in agreement with Commissioner Brady that the chair does not have the authority? And no, he does have the authority to make a motion. Ms. Sanchez, the roll, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glisten?
No.
Commissioner Petrie?
No.
And Commissioner McCarthy?
No.
Motion is denied. The appeal is denied. We're gonna move on. And so that we don't have any problems moving forward with the agenda, I will refrain from my comments regarding the last meeting at this time. Commissioner Atwood, please.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, December 1st, 2025, as presented.
Commissioner McCarthy, are you seconding?
I am not. I, I move that we do not, that we amend it. And I have a few amendments to the agenda that I would like for consideration and vote. My first.
I support.
We, we have a motion from Commissioner Atwood to approve the agenda for November, or December 1st, 2025. Support from Commissioner Brady, any discussion?
Now, please?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I would, and again, I'm new at this, okay? So there's a whole lot of details. I'll get better, I promise, I won't waste your time. I vote that we don't approve it. I have some things that I had concerns about. And can I, and I just have to ask for clarity here, can I make a motion to amend the agenda here? So that, oh, so we have to vote whether we want to approve it as is right now? Perfect, let's go do that.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Just for clarification, you can debate whether you want to do that right now? And then take the vote on it, expressing to the board why you think that it's not appropriate to approve it right now? And then, if it fails, you can make a separate motion to make the changes you votes.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCarthy?
I found multiple issues within the agenda that I had questions on. I have different thought processes on some of the things and the way that they were on the agenda. So I would not feel comfortable personally myself voting to pass this agenda as written. I have, I have a few amendments I would like to make, so my goal would be to vote not to pass this, just letting y'all know, and then to move forward with hearing my amendments to see if we can get those to be amended to this agenda.
Is there any other discussion on this topic? Okay. Madam Clerk? The roll?
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glisten?
No.
Commissioner Petrie?
No.
And Commissioner McCarthy?
No.
Okay, motion defeated. Mr. Chair, the motion carried. I'm sorry, what was? I heard three noes and two yeses. My apologies. Okay. Thank you. So the motion was defeated. Commissioner McCarthy?
I'm so sorry to do this. I move to amend item G2, ordinance introduction procedure to discussion only tonight with any motion action for this item to be moved to the December 15th agenda.
Okay, there is a motion before us from Commissioner McCarthy to move item G2 to a future meeting, is that correct? December 15th. And seconded by Commissioner Petrie. The chair recognizes the clerk.
Thank you. Is that the only item that you're removing from the approval of the agenda?
It's not really a removal, it's an amendment. I, I moved it to discussion only, it's not a removal. It's a discussion only versus allowing any motion to be made on it. So we still can talk about it. Do we have to approve because there could be?
We have an item on the agenda to approve. We have an item on the agenda that's the approval of the agenda. Agenda, that approval has failed.
Right, so now I'm making amendments to the agenda.
Are you doing them one at a time?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
So the first to repeat is that you would like to move any action on G2.
I move to amend item G2, ordinance introduction procedure to discussion only for tonight
Discussion only.
with a motion action for this item to be moved
To December 15th.
to the December 15th agenda.
Okay, again, I'll repeat for clarification. A motion has been made by Commissioner McCarthy to amend item G2 to discussion only with any motion or action for this item to be moved postponed to December 15th. Hi, please, I think I heard Linda first.
No, she did it first.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Petrie, and we start discussion. I'm gonna give the floor first to Commissioner McCarthy to explain her motion before it's contested.
Originally, when I read this, I was reading it and I, I didn't see a whole lot wrong with it. But then I woke up in the middle of the night and I started thinking. I believe that this is like a Trojan horse.
Point of order. Commissioner Brady, please state your point of order.
It sounds to me like we're debating the merits of the item and not its inclusion on the agenda.
I'm telling you why I want to do what I'm doing. Am I allowed to explain?
I think she's allowed to do that.
She's allowed to go into the merits of?
I'm not doing merits, I'm telling you my thought process of why. If you let me just get through it.
Why to remove it?
Why we are moving the motion portion to the next meeting. May I continue or should we just stop the meeting here? Let me ask you that question directly because now I am deliberating. Did you get slapped a lot as a child?
Point of order, point of order, sir.
I had to, I just had to do it.
Well, my mother will call you later.
Your, your point of order is recognized, Mr. Brady.
I would like to finish mine if I could. Just let me finish it, and then you can say you don't like it, sir.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes. Reprimanding, I'm sorry.
There's, there's two things here. One, she has the floor to explain her, her motion.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, interrupts the speaker.
You, you that was unprofessional conduct.
It was. It was, I apologize.
I don't forgive you.
That's okay, I can look at that.
This isn't, this isn't open for debate. I'm, I'm recognizing your point of order, I'm recognizing you on the floor.
Thank you.
And that's how we're gonna proceed from here.
May I, am I, am I allowed to continue without?
Yes, please.
Okay. I personally thought that it might be a Trojan horse, so here's my issue. The first portion, I looked at this as it is, says a ordinance. And that made me think that it was something large, something cumbersome, something that had a lot of weight to it. So I went and I, I looked up the definition of ordinance. And the ordinance is a rule established by authority, we are an authoritative body. So it's a rule, any rule that you make can be considered in the loose terms of an ordinance. My second thought was, what was the motivation for putting this on here? It says that it's for government transparency, for greater public input, to allow more forthright discussion. And that's all lovely, those all sound great, don't get me wrong. But we never needed this before, so it suddenly came up quickly. And what I realized that is if we approve this today, this moment, at the G2 level, then when we move forward to H2 to talk about a housekeeping issue that's been brewing behind the scenes for a week and a half, two weeks and a half, that we then would not be able to make a motion on that housekeeping item on H2. We would only be able, perhaps, to do a first reading, and then the, the second reading would be able to come somewhere in the future where a motion could be made. So I feel that this is somewhat of a kill pill. That's just my opinion. The second thing is, is that it says the first reading, which requires motion, is second, discussion, majority vote. The second reading of approval of the proposed ordinance, which requires motion, blah, 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 blah. It doesn't really give a timeline for all that to happen. It's a very gray area. And so I felt that it wasn't formatted enough to give clarity on the timeline that just would go over. So one, if we vote on it now, it would have a trickle-down effect for something that we want to have a motion on later in the agenda. And number two, it lacks clarity for me right now. That was my two points.
Fair enough, Commissioner McCarthy? I see Commissioner Atwood recognize.
Thank you, Chair. So this is just a modification. I did have conversations with our city manager, as we should, prior to meetings if we have these kinds of questions. And this is simply modifying our normal process of introduction, which we bypassed last week by removing this item, not this item, but specifically G3, from, from our agenda. It's not a Trojan horse. This is actually being more transparent by actually reading the changes that we're doing instead of just saying, "I introduce this." So it's actually giving the public more information on what we're doing. The following meeting is when we would discuss further and make motions to actually approve the ordinance or text amendments to that ordinance. I see no problem moving forward with this item on our agenda. Again, I would recommend, I don't know if you contacted the city manager or not with your question, but he would have answered that, your concern, prior to this meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's what he's there for.
Thank you, Commissioner Atwood. Commissioner McCarthy, do you have any response to his question? If you contacted the city manager or not?
I did not contact the city manager because I thought of this today and I had work. But the other issue I would have with this is I would need to have some kind of guarantee that when we get to H2, we can move to a motion.
We're on G2?
Right now, I'm saying that I want to, I'm making the amendment to G2. But the way that I would say, okay, I can vote yes to go with this, is if I could be assured that when we get to H2.
Mr. Mayor.
You can do it.
My last point of order was not well taken, I suppose you didn't rule on it. We are debate, we are in debate about the merits of this.
There's a motion on the table.
You can't debate the merits of it, the motion is to amend. We're either gonna talk about it or not gonna talk about it. Right now, we're talking about it. We're talking about it, instead of deciding if we're gonna talk about it.
Okay.
I have one more, Mr. Chair, if I could.
I recognize Commissioner Petrie. You've been waiting.
Call the question, let's just vote on this.
Okay.
We're gonna amend it and not have action on it? We can discuss it when we get to G2.
All right.
Chair.
Support.
All right, so we have a motion on the table put forth by Commissioner McCarthy
Point of order.
to postpone
Point of order.
action on item G2.
Point of order.
and amend the agenda for that, but still be able to discuss it when we get to that portion of the agenda, seconded by Commissioner Glisten. We've had some debate. Commissioner Petrie has called the question. Please, Commissioner Brady, your point of order.
They can call the question and get a support, and then we have to vote on whether or not we are calling the question. We're not voting on the amendment right now.
Great.
I, I, I would appreciate it, I had my hand up before she did, I would have appreciated a chance to speak.
She had her hand up after Josh, and I was waiting to circle back around to her. I'm reframing everything that's happening. We're at the call to question. Let's get to the call to question.
We're voting on the call of the question.
And so, again?
Nope, that's wrong.
So we're gonna vote on the call to question. And Commissioner Petrie, the call to question is to move forward.
Move forward and amend the agenda to not be an action, just discussion until next week because it's regarding ordinances that are important.
Okay.
Let's go, let's go forward.
We're gonna take a, a roll on that. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Brady?
I'm sorry, is the, is this the call to question?
The call to question is to move forward.
No.
Commissioner Glisten?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
The motion is carried. So we're moving forward with the amendment to the agenda on item G2 to restrict it to discussion only with action postponed to December 15th. Till further clarification could be made.
Point of parliamentary inquiry. Mr. Mayor? I, I don't understand what it means to just debate something but not vote on it. Am I, am I voting rights being taken away from me? How are we discussing something that we're not voting? I just need to be clear before I vote. When we vote to, what, I'm sorry, is it to postpone?
Where's G2? G2 is under administrative report.
To no action.
To take the action, I think the phrase is the actionability away? I'm unclear about what that means.
Discussion only.
So then I don't get to vote? That's my job, I'm here to vote on things.
That's correct, that's correct, because we're, we're taking away the actionability in this vote, is what, is what you guys are voting on right now.
Do you mind citing like any kind of precedent that that's a thing?
Well, there is a precedent that administrative reports and manager reports are informational only and shouldn't be voted on to begin with, but we don't follow that custom here.
Can I get like a reference of that, please?
I'm gonna ask the city attorney if you could quickly find a reference in terms of proceed, parliamentary procedure or custom pertaining to areas of the agenda designated for informational purposes versus new business, old business, that sort of thing.
Sure, I can get you.
It's not that actions can't come out of reports, is what I understand. I don't know the chapter and the subsection right now, I'm sure you can find it much quicker. But the, the, the the gist of it is that while reports are intended informationally, they can have motions arise, but it's not customary. motions arise, but it's not customary. But that's not what we do here.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, for interrupting you, but yes, that is a common in most parliamentary procedures that sometimes there are items that are for discussion. City managers report, city attorneys report, et cetera. I can get you an exact.
Commissioner Brady, do you need her to find an exact citation in that regard? Or is it acceptable for you that we've made that interpretation and the attorney concur?
My question would be, let's say we get to discussing this and I raise my hand and say I make a motion to do something. Am I not allowed to do that?
We've postponed it. If we voted that way, then no.
So you want to discuss it? I could read the motion as it was suggested, but I, and if it got seconded, you wouldn't allow a vote on it?
No.
You ever get voted down?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, you have a person you want to talk about?
I'm sorry. I don't know, I didn't see or hear who spoke that, but I will ask that.
That was me. I apologize.
Okay. I will ask that the public.
I didn't say anything. Very frustrating.
I can see, I think that's John D'Angelo, the chair.
Sir, he's still out of order.
So you're, yes, please. You're out of order. I'd prefer that the public do not interact with the commission. It's not what, there's a public comment time for that. Commissioner Glickman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would ask that perhaps Commissioner McCarthy would withdraw that stated motion that was seconded by Commissioner Petrie and restate it as simply, no discussion, just simply saying, I move to postpone G2 to the December 15th meeting.
Okay.
Clean.
Thank you, Commissioner Glickman, for a viable solution moving forward. Commissioner McCarthy, in the interest of moving things forward without further debate and conflict, could you please consider restating your motion to just postpone the item G2 to a future meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove my original motion for amending G2.
And I'll just remove my second.
Madam Clerk, do we need to take a vote on that as a motion? Okay. So they removed it.
I thought we called the question, Mr. Mayor.
We can do that. That's already passed at this point, and you guys have already voted to, or made a motion to remove it. Madam Clerk, have we voted on the actual motion to amend the item yet? Or are we at the point where we've just amended it? We've, she's withdrawing it? Commissioner McCarthy, can you please restate your amended motion?
Yes. I move to take item G2 off of tonight's agenda and move it to the December 15th agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Commissioner Petrie.
Excuse me. Could you give us one second?
They need to catch up, which is understandable.
Mr. Chair, can I respond to that just to clarify your situation?
In terms of state, in terms of clarification on her, sorry, question. If you like, or clarification, so that she gets more.
Here's.
You're not doing things right. You're not doing things right. You think you're doing things right, you're not.
Make sure to give consideration to me. Yes. Were you the second? She was. She, she moved, she's.
And then I flipped her. She flipped her.
Yeah, no, we're happy.
Oh, good.
The new one.
Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, with that. We're on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So please, state your motion.
Again, I move to remove item G2, ordinance introduction procedure, to be moved to the December 15th agenda, to be moved out of our agenda, to be moved to the December 15th agenda.
We have a motion in front of us, put forth by Commissioner McCarthy to postpone item G2 and amend the agenda. The G2 would reappear on the December 15th agenda, seconded by Commissioner Petrie. And we have some discussion. Commissioner Brady, please.
The last I knew, we had called the question and got a second and voted, and we should have been voting on that previous motion. And now that's not happening.
Because she wants to amend her motion, and she's changed it.
At the point at which we called the question, it doesn't belong to any one person. It belongs to the entire body to deliberate. The body decided we were gonna vote on that right now. And now we're just gonna say that we didn't decide to vote on that right now. I think they need to vote on it and vote no. And then they can introduce a new motion. I understand it's a hiccup, but apparently, I'm the only one that thinks the rules say what I think they say, and that's fine.
You're in the minority.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please.
I do agree with that. The question is called, it should be voted on, and then a new motion can be made, and that very well may be no.
You'll be happy.
This motion very well may pass, may not pass, but.
Okay.
And I agree, it is a little bit.
Let's take a roll on the call of motion at this time.
Commissioner Glickman?
I don't know what the motion is. Please restate it for me.
It's the original motion.
To remove the original motion, to postpone item G2, the next December, next meeting, December 15th.
I think it's the actionability.
That is not, that was, it's a first, we need the first one.
Okay. So it's to be discussed. This one? Discussion. Have a discussion, item G2. This one?
Yes.
Motion to amend agenda item G2 to discussion only with action to be postponed to December 15th meeting. No. Is that?
That's the correct motion, and now we'll take roll on it.
All right. So Commissioner Glickman? No. Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner McCarthy?
No.
Commissioner McCarthy?
No.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Petrie?
No.
Commissioner McCarthy?
No.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Petrie?
No.
Commissioner McCarthy?
No.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner? No. Did we miss a commissioner?
No.
We got Glickman?
No.
All right. Commissioner McCarthy?
I move to remove item G2, ordinance introduction procedure, to the December 15th agenda, second it.
Motion to move G2 off of our agenda and to the December 15th agenda, put forth by Commissioner McCarthy and seconded by Commissioner Petrie. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Atwood?
I mean, we got the packet on Tuesday. That's plenty enough time to do your research. We have to stop postponing things and taking stuff off our agenda. If you want it off, contact the city manager's office and talk to him about the specific item. That's what we were elected for. We have to stop removing stuff from our dang agenda. We can't get business done this way.
Commissioner Petrie?
I just want to say that we got the packet late Tuesday, probably five-ish. They were closed Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
You have a cell number?
But I don't have access to everyone that I would want to speak to. So I try and refrain from calling on the weekend or holidays. And Commissioner McCarthy is new. I'm trying to give consideration. We are not, this ordinance that we removed, she's on the zoning committee, I'm on the zoning committee. There's no rush. We have no ordinance right now that, oh my gosh, by tomorrow needs to be taken care of. So I think the consideration that we're giving a new board member to delay voting on it till one meeting, there's no emergent reason. And I'm appalled, actually, that this is happening.
Commissioner McCarthy?
I'm going to find with the way that the item G2 was written, I'm gonna have all the same concerns next time because it isn't, I don't see things in there that I would want to have in there. I'm just being honest. So I don't know. But right now, since we can't discuss it to find out more, to lay the platform so I feel comfortable with it, then we're gonna have to move to the next week and have the discussion of that. And again, that's fine. I apologize that I'm problematic.
Commissioner Brady?
Mr. Mayor, I think it would be fair to say that if something gets brought up on an agenda item, that it doesn't necessarily have to have action taken on it, that we can have discussion and we can vote, right? And there are plenty of ways to slow things down because that's what's needed. I just don't feel as though not talking about it for another two weeks is the most effective use of the process.
I understand your concern, and in some respects, I agree. And I think that maybe Commissioner McCarthy agreed with that at some point too, which is why she wanted to just amend the meeting to remove actionability on it, and it met with considerable amount of objection. And so I think that if we allowed her to make her first motion and let that pass, I think that it's very possible she would have got all the answers she needed. But I, Commissioner McCarthy, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but would it be fair to say that even if you got your questions answered, you still wouldn't have wanted to vote with all the last-minute information? Or is that why you framed your amendment that way?
For clarity, I wanted to ask a series of questions, understand where the genesis of this came from, why suddenly it was here that we, and again, Mr. Atwood said it's just kind of a modification of something that was already on the books. I wanted to have dialogue to better understand it, maybe ask for some additional clarification to be put into the wording, and then be able to contemplate and mull it over and then know, because I don't know that I would vote yes or no right away. I want to think about it. I want to think about it in context. I want to think about it over scope of time, and then I would be ready to vote for it the next week. That didn't work. So if we can't talk about it, and I can, and I'm gonna be honest, I can look at Mr. Atwood and say, it's a good point. You just vote no on it then. You just vote no on it and, you know, but I had concerns about it. So this is what I did, rightly or wrongly. I'm just explaining myself.
Yep. Mr. Brady?
I'm okay with it. I'm okay with the process of slowing things down. I'm not okay with the board getting together and deciding that a member of the board, any member of the board, would somehow lose rights and privileges to make motions during items. So my resistance is not to this in particular. My resistance, I think you could, I think we could talk about it, and you could, while it's in discussion, decide to postpone, and I think that's perfectly reasonable. We're saying before we even get there, nobody else is allowed to try to get a vote on to it. And that's the only reason I sit in this chair, is to vote on things. So when things come up, we're asked to vote on them. But there's a process. You can slow things down. I don't think that the strategy of punting on the agenda is appropriate because it doesn't allow for any of the discussion to start.
Yes. Commissioner Petrie?
I think that that's okay. We're all allowed to feel what we think is appropriate, that we want to move forward. The bottom line is, Commissioner McCarthy made a motion, and now can we please vote on it? Because it's 10 to 8.
No further discussion on this item. The motion before us, put forth by Commissioner McCarthy, is to postpone item G2 till December 15th, 2025, seconded by Commissioner Petrie. The roll, please.
Commissioner Petrie?
Will you repeat it one more time? I'm sorry, I lost.
To postpone?
Yes. Yes, postpone.
Yes?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is that the entire agenda, or is that just the?
It was G2.
Just G2. Commissioner McCarthy?
I move. This is a technicality, so. I move that item, it's for clarity because of the way it's laid out. I move that item H2, day of seating, be amended to include a motion action step after discussion. And the reason, so I just.
Second it.
Motion put forth by Commissioner McCarthy to include in H2 the actionability of the item seconded by Commissioner Petrie. Do we have any discussion on this item, this motion? Commissioner McCarthy?
Am I allowed to give clarity?
Yes, you're the maker of the motion.
The reason why I said this is because on all the others where a suggestive motion or motion would be listed, it's listed right underneath the title of whatever the section is. So H1 says there's a suggestive motion. G6 says there's a suggestive motion. But under H2, which is a housekeeping issue that we've been kind of tossing around behind the scenes, it doesn't say that. And so, and so my thing is, is that I just think that we should be able to not just have a discussion on it and to be able to move forward. If the discussion that we have yields outcome, then we should be able to make a motion to move forward.
Okay. Which one of the two of you were up first? Commissioner Brady, please.
Is this necessary? If anything can have a motion made at any time, is it necessary to specifically say that this one needs an actionability?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner McCarthy?
I specifically did it because of this type of back and forth that we're having in the committee meetings, in this commission meeting, that I could make an assumption that it could have an action on it, and I could spend a half hour of our time arguing whether then because it didn't say suggestive motion, that we couldn't do it. And so it is a technicality that I'm doing this to make sure that there is no raspberries that come up later in the meeting. That's my whole point. And I said it was technical.
Understood. Commissioner, please.
So just to clarify, you want to have a motion and discussion on something the public has no idea what we're talking about? It was not in our agenda besides a legal opinion, which the public has no idea the backstory of how that even came up. You want to add that to our agenda and vote on it, but you did not want to vote on an item that the public seen the same time you see. That's correct? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Brady?
Are the emails that you've been sending to all of us gonna be included in discussion? Are we gonna read those emails and reenact the discussion that we've already had in the seating chart? It would be my intention to read those emails out loud, just so, if you don't want any raspberries. It would be my intention to take the email deliberation that's been going on behind the scenes and to bring it before the public.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner McCarthy, please.
I don't believe, I believe that you and I are agreeing to disagree on the severity of the emails and the intent. And so if they were brought to the public, not only would I say that they can be, because I don't think what you're saying is in them, that's again, it's your deliberation, it's your toeing in on an item. I don't see it the same way as you, so that would happen. But also, then if we're going to bring up those emails, we would bring up other dialogues that happened, I know with me, via phone call, and all those would come out as well. So I'm just saying, we can open it up. If you think that there's dirty laundry, and I know that you're, I know that you are[1727.58]
again, it's your deliberation, it's your, your toeing in on an item. I don't see it the same way as you, so that would happen. But also, then if we're going to bring up those emails, we would bring up other dialogues that happened, I know with me via phone call, and all those would come out as well. So I'm just saying, we can open it up. If you think that there's dirty laundry, and I know that you're, I know that you are hoping to spill dirty laundry, and so I don't have a problem with that coming out. I think it, I think this is a housekeeping. I don't think it had to go this far. I think we could have moved through this, but somehow, some way, again, we decided that we had to nail ourselves to this hill and we're now on it. I'd like to just get it gone. I'd like to get it gone and move on to bigger, better things.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. With that in mind, I'll repeat the motion for the clerk, clarification. There has been a motion made by Commissioner McCarthy, seconded by Commissioner Petrie to include or amend item H2 to include actionability beyond mere discussion. The roll, please.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioner McCarthy.
I told you ahead of time, I had a few. I move that the item C1, official 2026 meeting calendar, be pulled off the consent agenda and be included as regular business in tonight's meeting.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor made by Commissioner McCarthy, seconded by Commissioner Petrie to pull consent agenda item C1, the official 2026 meeting calendar, off of consent agenda and into regular business for this agenda.
Does that go then like under G, like G7, something like that?
I would like to ask the city manager where he feels it would be best placed in the agenda. He'd like to confer with the clerk as well, since you guys work very closely on this agenda.
Yeah, I guess my question then would be for Commissioner McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, is it your intention that we discuss this item tonight or did you want to postpone it to another meeting?
Discuss it.
Yeah. In that case, I'd probably put it last item, G7.
G7.
G7. Any further discussion? I will repeat the motion on the table, put forth by Commissioner McCarthy, seconded by Commissioner Petrie to move or pull consent agenda item C1, official 2026 meeting calendar, off of the consent agenda and place it into administrative reports under G7 for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment on that briefly?
Yes, please.
I believe it might be the custom of the board to allow any individual commission number two simply request it and no motion.
Unfortunately, she made the motion. I think we could have got to the consent agenda and she could have just pulled it and we could have discussed it there without reassigning it, but this is the order in which she presented it, so we're going to proceed with it. Thank you. Thank you. The roll, please.
Commissioner Atwood?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
The motion carries. Commissioner McCarthy.
I promise it's the last one. After I, I'm just going to give a little clarity. I'm not trying to be harsh debate, okay? But after I went through all these and I found these, I really feel like that we need to spend a little bit more time on this agenda. So my next motion is I move to add to the next meeting, December 15th, discussion and review of the current meeting procedures for the agenda process itself, to include but not be limited to the agenda template format, so we're going to lay out, for offline discussions and pre-meeting, pre-public review of the agenda prior to the meeting.
Commissioner Atwood.
Does this have regards to the email that we received from the mayor?
It was, it was a, am I allowed?
The public doesn't know about that either.
Okay, so here's what my, my, it really wasn't about any emails. Here's what happened. When I'm researching this, because I'm new, and I also know, I have to say, I give credit to, to Commissioner Brady. He is on it like white on rice, okay? And that's a positive. We don't have to agree. You have all kinds of different voices. And he is really, he is really adamant in his conviction about following procedures. So that's a positive. He keeps us, he keeps us in guardrails and I thank you for that. Well, what I found is when I was.
Sorry.
You watching a game of it?
No.
And so what I found is when I was researching, would say, hey, this should go under new business. And I look in there and I go, we don't have a new business. Hey, this should go under suggestion, Chair, Commissioner Report. We don't have a Commissioner Report. So what I was finding is that when I was looking in Robert's rules or looking up things, the sections that they said that that would happen in, they weren't really jiving with this. So I would just like to, so then, after I did all of that, there has been an email that came through. I got to be real honest, I didn't read, like, to me, it wasn't red lines, so it didn't tell me what was changing. It was just an email, so I didn't really read it. Like, you got to do colors. I like colors. I like color trees. So I didn't really read that all that much. I don't think that email was the basis of it. It was more during my discovery, I kept finding that the way this is wasn't really coinciding with what I was finding in our favorite book. Yes.
Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Brady, please.
I just, I, I want to, I would, I would seek order in the meeting to, to actually present ideas and vote on the ideas rather than present ideas and debate ideas. She's, she made it. She's made the motion, then she's going into the explanation. I don't, I, I want the explanation. And there, and there's five of us up here trying to talk.
Did Commissioner Atwood ask the question? Did she's answering correctly?
A question on what, though? Because there's been a motion, no second, and we're already in the debate.
I didn't recognize the second. And I recognized Commissioner Atwood raising his hand first.
I thought it was second.
So there was a motion put forth by Commissioner, Commissioner McCarthy. If I understand you correct, you want to, you want to add to the next meeting, December 15th, a discussion about, and review about our.
Of current meeting procedures for the agenda process.
Meeting procedures.
To include but not be limited to the agenda template format for offline discussions. So that is an email per se, and pre-meeting and pre-public review of the agenda prior to the meeting.
Okay. And, and that was seconded by Commissioner Petrie, which I didn't recognize. Then discussion kind of came a little bit out of order, but it's okay. I recognized you first, Commissioner Atwood. And you asked a valid question. Commissioner McCarthy has answered that question. Commissioner Brady, you're up.
Yeah, this will be a point of order. I'm not sure that we can put things onto the agenda for next meeting while we're debating the agenda for this meeting. I think it'd be more appropriate for her to do that during her commissioner comment. And there's also a process by which you can get agenda items given to the clerk Wednesday before noon.
I would agree with that. Thank you.
So my point of order is sustained, so we're not going to discuss.
Yes, it is sustained. All right. There, we have an amended agenda at this time. I'm going to, I'm going to make an observation about the agenda as it's amended and some of the things that I heard from Commissioner McCarthy. The observation is this. I think Commissioner McCarthy, without putting words in your mouth, that a lot of the problem that you see in the agenda as it is stated without your amendments, is that you see suggested motions in places that, that imply that there's going to be action taken regardless, potentially maybe even that action has already been decided because we have this here. I know as a resident, when there was an issue a handful of years back regarding my neighborhood, and it was, it was set for public hearing, there were these suggested motions embedded into the agenda and myself and all of my neighbors felt that we were coming into a meeting that was already decided. And in a lot of cases, that's how it played out and we had to go to additional meetings to, to, to get resolutions that, that were more appropriate. And I think it's a perception issue. It's not that there's anything wrong here. I think it's a perception issue and I think that, that maybe you've overcorrected through the amendments on the perception issue, but I think maybe, and recognizing that this creates confusion and concern, especially for commissioners as well, who feel that maybe this is already decided and the actionability is coming, or that no action is coming because there's no suggested on some and suggested motions on some. I would think that we need to reevaluate having suggested motions embedded in an agenda, especially public facing, where the public might feel that we have administrative staff indirectly influencing legislation. Not that this isn't a valuable resource, but I don't think it should be public facing. And I think that it creates a lot of confusion and we've had a lot of amendments tonight as a result of it, possibly. At this time, I think I would, I would entertain a motion to discuss that, to, to, to address that.
Mr. Chair, before we move on, the clerk had raised her hand briefly.
Ah.
The remainder of the agenda hasn't been approved.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, did I see another hand?
She hadn't even.
Was it, I thought it was.
Well, I'm just thinking, can't we cover that with what she's asking on the December 15th meeting? Can we put all that discussion for suggested motions and all that, wrap it all into one and make sure we get it on the agenda?
I think that's appropriate. We can do that. All right?
That's no question.
So then, are there any other conversations? The, the request was to approve this agenda and hear a motion for that. The, approve the amended agenda. Is, is there a motion? Commissioner Petrie.
I move that we approve the amended agenda. Amen.
I second.
Okay. There's been a motion by Commissioner Petrie, seconded by Commissioner McCarthy to approve the amended agenda. The roll, please.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Motion carries. That brings us to the minutes. Item A. Commissioner Petrie.
I move that we approve the minutes from the meeting of November 17th with one clarification, and that is that it has been corrected, that I did say in a motion to remove the action of three items. And so I just want the public to know that our minutes that are posted are correct because even though we didn't have a, you know, a replay action.
Are you making a motion or a statement?
I'm making a statement. That's, I don't, I just want to make a note that's in, that it's correct. So it did happen how the minutes said. So I move that we accept those minutes.
And I second.
Motion by Commissioner Petrie to approve the minutes seconded by Commissioner McCarthy. Commissioner Brady.
I have two amendments that I'd like to make. The first one is under the section of the minutes.
Section of the minutes.
Mm-hmm. It's the minutes in the minutes. I move to amend the minutes by striking the sentence, Mayor Hing called for a two-minute recess at 6:49 PM to allow the city manager, Womack, to research the information and substitute the following. The chair declared a recess at 6:49 PM without a motion, second, or vote, which action was a violation of a procedure.
Do we have a second?
Support.
We have a motion before us put forth by Commissioner Brady to amend the minutes to change the verbiage from declared a recess to, or called a recess to declared a recess without a motion or a vote. Seconded by Commissioner Atwood. Any discussion? Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Brady.
I think this is especially important because when the chair made that motion, uh, when the chair, when the chair made that statement and then left the room, it effectively left us in a situation either without a chair or putting the mayor pro tem into the chair. The audio was cut. There was discussion being had all over the place that I would have liked to have been privileged to and I wasn't. And so the only real corrective, I didn't make a point of order at the time. The only real corrective action I have right now is to say, you know, we didn't actually vote for that to happen as it should have done.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have it seconded. Discussion. Commissioner McCarthy.
I guess my thing is that, no, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to take it back. Never mind. I apologize.
Any other? The roll, please.
Commissioner Glickman?
No.
Commissioner Petrie?
No.
Commissioner McCarthy?
No.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Motion defeated. Commissioner Brady.
Okay, my second one. Has to do with the proposed motion to amend the agenda, actually right above that. I move to amend the minutes to, of the date, I'm sorry. I meant, I move to amend the minutes of the November 17th, 2025 meeting by inserting the following sentence immediately after the paragraph that describes the mayor's motion to amend the agenda. And this is what I would like included.
Can you direct us?
Um, right above, right at the end of 264 on the old minutes. It says, Mayor Hing proposed an amendment to the agenda requesting that all items under subsection GH and JV postponed. And I would like to include Commissioner Brady raised a point of order challenging the right of the chair to introduce a motion and the chair failed to immediately rule on that point of order.
We have a motion seconded, support by Commissioner Atwood. We have a motion by Commissioner Brady, supported by Commissioner Atwood to amend the minutes under section 264 to include under the sentence, the final sentence of 264, to include that the mayor failed to, oh, right here, that the inserting, that Commissioner Brady raised a point of order challenging the right of the chair to introduce a motion and the chair failed to immediately rule upon that point of order. Any further discussion? The roll, please.
Commissioner Petrie?
No.
Commissioner McCarthy?
No.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
No.
Motion defeated. Since we're on the topic of the chair making motions and we've already voted and established that the chair in this body has the privilege to make motions, I am going to, the chair is going to move that we add to this agenda as item.
Point of order. We've already approved the agenda, sir.
Oh, we've already approved the agenda? Okay. All right, then strike that. And we're moving on. Wait a second.
The minutes, we have to vote on it.
Yeah, the minutes. There we go. We need to vote on the minutes. So there was a motion. We have a motion because we've had several motions from Commissioner Brady. Do we have a motion on, on the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes from November 17th meeting.
I second.
Okay. Motion put forth by Commissioner Petrie, seconded by Commissioner McCarthy to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held November 17th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Discussion.
I mean, I was there. I know you guys just voted no, but I was there. That is, what I said happened is what happened. And you guys just voted to say that that didn't happen? So we're going to take down in the official record that when he declared a recess and walked out of the room, we're going to just say that that didn't happen.
All right, go ahead.
It is my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ramona, the, the, the person taking the minutes gets to decide what goes in the minutes. I mean, they, I'm not saying if it's right or if it's wrong. I can't recall correctly how it was said, when it was said. That's why I voted no. I'm, I'm reading the minutes that was given to me and they get to decide, whoever takes the minutes gets to decide what they're putting.
Yeah, but I tried to amend it. You said no, that didn't.
Commissioner Brady. Commissioner McCarthy.
I voted to not amend the minutes. I just voted to just go forward with the minutes as written by our clerk. That was my vote, to not amend minutes. That was it. It's nothing.
Okay. Again, there's a motion before us put forth by Commissioner Petrie to approve the minutes. Second, we already voted?
We already did.
Okay. All right. So I don't know why we're deliberating still then. All right. It's, it's too much. We're getting way.
Point of order, we didn't vote.
We got a vote.
Did we vote?
No.
Yes.
So.
No, we did not.
We did. Okay. So for clarification, we're voting to.
They made a motion. He made an alternate motion. He made a second alternate motion.
Yep. So there was discussion.
They voted, they voted. Now we're back to the original.
Now we're back to the original.
Yep.
Okay.
And it's been.
Back to the original.
So call.
All right, roll call.
Okay. Commissioner McCarthy? Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Blissman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Will you repeat that motion one more time?
To approve the minutes of November 17th?
Yes. Yes, I wanted to make sure.
That moves us to public comments at this time. And, uh, yes, I would like to first move, the chair would like to move that we take a recess since there's been an extensive amount of time since this meeting had started, allow the public to have a bathroom break, and, and, and recoup, and we will reconvene in two minutes.
I second.
Second by Commissioner McCarthy. Is there discussion? If there's no discussion...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's discussion.
Commissioner Brady?
I don't think the people are interested in that. If they're doing it for the people, they're, they got popcorn. They're ready.
All right. Yet, right now, that's the discussion. You've made your point. Any further discussion? The motion was made as a result of a recommendation from Mr. Womack, who I find to have very valid recommendation there. It's, you know, it's on the table. If there's no further discussion, then we'll, all in favor say, um, all in favor say aye.
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 All in favor say nay? Or all opposed say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries. Two-minute recess. Calling the meeting back to, back to order, and we are at the point of public comments in our agenda. First, we're going to, let me reiterate our rules. The, our rules state that each member of the public has three minutes. When the timer is over, your turn is over. When you approach the podium, please state your name for the record. And before we accept hands in the air, Commissioner Petrie, were you going to? Okay.
Dear Heavenly Father, I invite your Holy Spirit here, which I did before I got here, so I'm just gonna ask for you to be here again. Thank you, Lord, that you are never late, you are always on time, and that you are in control always, even though it doesn't feel, feels like chaos sometimes. Thank you that you're in control. Lord, you reminded me this morning of the scripture Jeremiah 31:3 that says, "I have loved you with an everlasting love; therefore, with loving kindness, I have drawn you." Lord, thank you that our prayers are never ceasing, that generation of prayers are here tonight and will go on from here. Thank you for each person here. You've ordained them to be here for your purposes. Lord, we pray that you would help us to go forward with a spirit of love, unity, peace, calm, clarity, organization, but most of all, Lord, with the motives of doing the business for, for this community, because you love this community. Be with us this evening, throughout the rest of this meeting and beyond. Help us to make thoughtful and good decisions for our city and the people in it, for the present, the future, and still honoring all the people in the past that helped build this wonderful city that we were elected to represent. So, thank you for what you're gonna do, thank you for what you've already done. Be with us, Lord, as we finish this meeting in your precious Son Jesus' name and amen.
Amen.
Additional comments from the public? Yeah, I'm in.
Wayne Bernier. Well, first of all, I wanna start off by thanking the city workers. You guys are all fantastic, do a great job. That's a plus for the, the city. So, everything's not gloom and doom here. As a city, as a resident of Wupira, I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed, okay? And what's transpiring and stuff with this is ridiculous, okay? Josh, I don't know any of you guys, okay? Don't know any of you guys at all. I know you did wonders for our city, and I feel bad for you. I do, I felt horrible for you, okay? Gentlemen, Mr. Brady next to ya, very knowledgeable and stuff. Thank you for representing the city, very knowledgeable, okay? I feel we got other people on this board that are in over their heads. I did this for 27 years, okay? And there's a lot of parody going on, okay? And it's not good. It's not good. The new mayor, you gotta be a leader, okay? Last week, I'm sorry, you weren't a leader, okay? What's going on tonight? You're not a leader tonight, okay? I hope that gets better, okay? You know, I hate it, you know, it's the, it's the cold hard truth. We got one of the best city managers and stuff the city can get, okay? I've been around it for years. You're pushing him out the door, and I wouldn't blame him, okay? I wouldn't blame him. Well, I'd be fine in another job if I was him. Again, never met the guy. I don't know any of you guys, okay? I know Rodney does a great job. I know, uh, Jen, James Old does a great job. I'm very, I, I didn't vote. I can't vote, I don't live in the city, okay? I didn't vote for the mayor, couldn't vote for the mayor, okay? But right now, we're acting like kids, and this is ridiculous, okay? As a city, I love my city, okay? I love my city. But you know what? The parody and stuff, right away, we got two that are voting yes, we got three of them that are voting no. Is it the best interest of the city, or is it the best interest for yourself? I guess that's the thing we gotta ask, because right now, I'm starting to really doubt you, okay? Especially some of the newer people. So anyway, that's, that's all I got and stuff, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good in the city and stuff, but man, people gotta grow up. We're acting like kids here.
Thank you.
Thank you. In the back.
John DeAngelis, Memorial Township. First of all, I'd like to say your clerk, Ramona Sanchez, did a fabulous job on the election, as usual. I'm a county canvasser, and you guys really have a great clerk. You, Mr. Brady, I think, you know, it's tough when the person you want to get elected doesn't get elected, but what you're doing here, I, you know, this is two hours I'll never get back in my life, uh, listening to you go, oh, him? You think it's him? There's mistakes in every single meeting. You're being a baby. You need a passement. You need to grow up. I hope your kids aren't watching you right now on this video. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
You can't talk, it's public time, shut up.
My name is Chris Powers.
I, I, I would request that he be escorted out. It's a second offense.
Okay? My name is Chris Powers, and I live at the Vasa Country Club, Condomineering Association in Elfa Township. I've been on their Board of Directors off and on over the years, many, many times. I've also worked for the Michigan Legislature for over 20 years, and I've seen all manner of session, committee meetings, hearings, including the hearing that was to remove the state representative from this town. I was there. I thought I had seen it all, until tonight. Forty-five minutes, and the only thing we accomplished on the agenda was the call to order and the pledge of allegiance. We started out talking about, are we small, are we big? I don't know where we went from there. There was a motion on the floor, seconded, it took 45 minutes to vote on the thing. Look, this is crazy. You guys gotta fix this. I suggest you go on a retreat, not paid for by taxpayer dollar, dollars, get in a room, lock the door, and figure this out. These people came to hear about the business of the city. That's why I came, the, the stuff that was on the agenda. We're on item B right now. Listen, I appreciate your enthusiasm, but you're pole vaulting over my stairs. I mean, you really are. Every time your hand went up, I'm like, point of order, put, come on! Get on with it! You guys gotta fix this, you know? And I just told Mr. Hogan, um, before the break, I said, "You're gonna need a bigger notebook." You know, so, I don't know what you're gonna do. I came here tonight with optimism that I would hear what's going on with the city. I, I'm leaving, I can't put up with this nonsense. We should've started the meeting with a prayer. That, everything you had in that prayer was optimism and hope, and maybe we should've let off with that, you know? But we didn't. So, anyway, that's, man, I don't know. That's my piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the back.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Leroy. I'm resident of Mayfield Township. I visit the city often, I shop at the businesses here. I lead an organization that rents an office in the city. So, um, I agree with Mr. John DeAngelis. Stefan, you are a baby. This has been ridiculous, it's been...
No need to call him, please.
Sure. Stefan, your conduct tonight has been disgraceful. You will not let this body get through an action without raising your hand to get another, sorry, to get through, or sorry, to, without raising another appeal or another, you know, whatever issue you have, you gotta let it go. John's right, there's errors in all meetings, and your motions about the minutes got defeated. That's it. It's done. You went back to relitigate those. It's ridiculous. You fought on both sides of several issues tonight. After you argued for something, we finally got to a motion, you voted on it, and then you went back. I think it was about the, the voting. You guys have a right to vote on issues brought before, that if it's on the agenda, you can make a motion and vote on it. If it's, if you, if a commissioner votes to remove it from the agenda, then you don't get to vote on it. There's no right to vote that's being taken away. It's ridiculous. Also, when you call to question, that ends discussion, and you vote on the issue that's before the body. There was two calls to question this night, and both times, we continued for another half hour. So, it's a lot. Now, move on to some items in the agenda that hopefully we'll get to tonight. On the G1, the Steel Patriots Bike Nights, I don't know why we give our city up to some bike club that, you know, keeps me out of the city. I don't wanna be down here with a bunch of bikers, I don't care. I think it hurts businesses, I think it keeps people out of the city, and why do I have to share my city with an organization that gets to just call dibs for several weekends, many weekends over the summer? Let's see. Anything else fun? No, I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob.
Any other public comments tonight? Ma'am, in the second row, please, first.
Bernadette Treese, and I do live in the city, and I've lived in the city for 52 years, and I've visited the commission many times, and I am embarrassed by what I saw here tonight. It sounds like there's a lot of dissension that's going on, and maybe as a suggestion, the commission members and the mayor need to meet before we spend two hours at our city commission meeting, getting to the second item on the agenda. I, I am embarrassed, and I'm not calling any names, I'm not calling... I am embarrassed, and I'm not calling any names, I'm not calling anyone out. I just think you, as a commission, need to work together to resolve some of these issues. Also, on the Bike Night, I live right at the beginning of town, and I would like to see it not every single Friday night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First row.
Hi. Carol Blanchard, and you're in trouble, because they nicknamed me Mortar Mouth in high school, so this could take time, but I won't do that to you. Anyway, bad jokes, I think. Been driving through, moved quite a few times, about nine times with my family before I was 18. My dad was a builder. And come from the south, I'm by Detroit, and every time I go down to see my relatives, I go through Oxford, and also go through Rochester. And Rochester is a beautiful Christmas light display that covers the whole buildings, and it's great for Christmas. But Oxford, I think, has come up with something very ingenious, where they have some kind, not being an electrical bulb expert, but they have a lining that's like, I compare it to like eyeliner on ladies' eyes, that goes around the top of the buildings, and it was put there by the Downtown Development Authority, costs like $20,000, and they hired a local contractor, and every time you go down, especially with winter, and it's darker earlier, you see the whole fronts, facades of the side of the buildings, and the names of the businesses, and also, it illuminates the town, so that if there's anything going on, and anybody needs help, or whatever, it really lights up the town, and it helps Oxford so much, because they've got a problem where there's a state highway going right through the middle of their town. So, it works so well down there, none of the buildings are vacant or for rent, the businesses all seem to be thriving, and this was put in in 2023, down there in Oxford. And so, if I wanted to come here, and I was really happy to see this many people here tonight, this is fantastic, because I live here, and just turned my odometer at 70 in September, and been here since 87, and this is fantastic. I expected to be one of two people, because it's been so long since I've been here, and rather hypocritical, I'm really glad to see this much turnout, and even with little dissension here and there, it's nice to see people here and caring about LaPierre. And that's why I'm here tonight, I'm glad I made it, and any ideas like that? I just became a widow last January, and had been presented with my house that is a real money pit of a Victorian house, and it's under the thing of obsolescence, where there's such a different value, and there's such a diverse amount of residents in my neighborhood, that the value of your house, and I got relatives and friends saying to me, "Carol, you can't stay there forever, you're 70 years old, you gotta be able to navigate the stairs." So, I'm over at all the gyms, I'm trying to get it, I'm trying to get it so I can get the stairs, but in the meantime, as same as when I came here in 87, I look at the neighborhood and realize that it's time to get active, and for people to get interested, because LaPierre kind of lags behind...
That's your time.
... some of the other communities. So, I wanted to suggest that, it's the Downtown Development Authority, and I didn't know how to get to our Downtown Development Authority, I thought you could help, and thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Good evening, my name is Geraldine Carson. I was born and raised in LaPierre. My family has been, has been in this area, in LaPierre, for over 100 years, and I am glad to see, and I pray, that changes be made to the city. I do not like LaPierre. I used to love LaPierre, but I'm beginning not to like it. I want to bring up again about the marijuana, the smell. Every time I come hit Oregon Road, and over here, east of town, I smell marijuana. And I know we're supposed to call the city in regards to that. I live just on the other side of the city limits, and right off M-21 corridor, and what's on M-21? We have cannabis and marijuana shops, and I can't even work up my yard. So, I want to complain about that, but I am gonna pray, and I am confident for this board to help the changes, to change not only that, but to bring back the way LaPierre used to be. I know Melissa, I went to high school with her husband, graduated with him, and LaPierre used to be a wonderful place. We used to spend a lot of time downtown. It's become, it's getting better, I will say that, but I pray to God, and I know with my prayers, that you guys will make the right choices and dispel some of this dissension that's on this board. I really do, because it is a wonderful town, and I've loved this town my entire life. I worked at the hospital here as a nurse, I worked in this area as a nurse for over 50 years, and I've taken care of many, many people, family members of people that are sitting in this room, and it's just, this dissension has got to stop that's here, and I'm confident that Mayor Hing is gonna try to do the best job he can, and I know he can do a good job. He's got Christ at his back. And I'm, I'm a Christian, and I firmly believe that with God's help, we will make this town a better town, but we need to, we need to be kind to one another, and we need to do what's right for the people of this community, because, like I said, I love this town.
Time's up, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments tonight? I'm going to, I'm going to... We'll wait there. Let's move on to the bill listing, since the consent agenda only had one item that was pulled and put to G7. We have before us the bill listing for December 1st, 2025. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Glickman.
I move that we accept the bill listing for December 1st, 2025, in the amount of
Support. Motion by Commissioner Glickman, support by Commissioner Atwood for approving the bill listing for December 1st, 2025, in the amount of $171,151.12. Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll, please.
Commissioner Petry?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. We come to proclamations, recognitions, and resolutions, seeing none, we move on to public hearings, having none there, we move on to administrative reports. Item G1, special event, Steel Patriots Friday Night Bikes. Do we have a motion there? I see. Commissioner Glickman?
Yes, I have a motion I'd like to give. I move to deny the Steel Patriots Friday Night Bike Night Special Events as it is presented, and to form a committee to restructure the event in a way that addresses all the expressed concerns that are in the packet, and the committee is to bring back the results of the committee's decisions for further action.
Motion by Commissioner Glickman, seconded by Commissioner Petry, to deny the Steel Patriots Friday Night Bikes event in lieu of changes, to address all the concerns that are inside of the packet, and be brought, well, and to form a committee to address all of the concerns that are inside of the packet, and to be brought back under those considerations. Discussion open to Commissioner Brady.
I think it's a huge liability to put together a committee that could then make these recommendations, and specifically recommended not to do that, because if that committee says, "Hey, if you do A, B, and C, then your event will get approved," but that effectively takes the voting right away from the body as a whole, and so if a committee says, "You do A, B, and C, you get your event," they bring it back, and we say, "No." Now, we've misled that group. I would be much more comfortable just telling them, "No," and let them try again. I don't want to get involved with event planning, it's not a city cosponsored event, I have no intention of... I'm not volunteering, and I'm not trying to get involved in what they're doing, our decision is, do we close the street or not?
Very good. Commissioner Brady, Commissioner Glickman, do you have a response to his concern?
Yeah, I would amend it that we just, at this point, remove that, I would say that we not accept their, what do they call it? Special event?
Special event, application.
The application, that we don't accept the application, and let them come back themselves. I would, I would make that change. Sorry for mumbling that out.
Commissioner, which one of you, first?
I was waiting, but...
You, go ahead, Commissioner Brady, she's conceding.
We should have some reasons for denying their special event, and I think that the reasons for denying it are that it's purely financial, and mostly, in this case, that we, we know we're doing the parking lot, and it's gonna be very problematic to have the parking lot and the street both closed. So, we have a, we have a list, there's a list of things that we're supposed to have, and we deny a special event?
Yep.
We should make sure our language is clear.
Go ahead. Commissioner Petry?
My thing is, I, I feel like denying them without any of our wish list as a city is unfair to them, so then they come back and we go, "Nope, not that either, we're not giving them any guidance," and I know that last year, Mr. Womack met with them, spoke about some things we wanted, but I think to have more than one person meet with them, I know that Josh and Mayor Mark Hart met with Steel Patriots last time, before they, before we made a decision, so things were discussed. I think we need to give them some guidelines, instead of just saying, "No, try again." You know, I'm not into event planning either, but I think that we have people that want the event, I don't think we should have it every week either, but to just say, "No," come back and try again, without giving them what we want, to possibly accept it, is unfair to them too. So...
Very good.
We've already postponed it.
Very good, I think that you and Commissioner Brady are on the same page with that. Commissioner Brady?
I have the list of considerations for issuance of denial, if we'd like to...
Thank you.
Pick them.
Before you do, would we like to withdraw the motion that's on the table, and then consider a new motion once?
Sure. I rescind it.
The list, okay, very good.
Rescind my second.
Very good. Commissioner Brady, proceed.
There's no motion on the floor?
No.
They had a motion that seconded it, so I would like them to rescind it, so that there's no motion, if you'd like to make a motion with your...
No, thank you.
Madam, or Mr. Hing?
Yes.
Can you finish your conversation on what you wanted to recite, please? You were gonna recite the list. There's no motion.
I, well...
I have a motion. I will give you another motion. I move that we deny the Steel Patriots Friday Night Bikes events as presented.
Any support? Commissioner Brady? There's a motion on the floor, support by Commissioner Glickman, supported by Commissioner Brady, to deny the event application for Steel Patriots Friday Night Bikes as presented. Discussion. Commissioner Brady?
Can I get Mr. Womack to go over? Do you mind, do you want?
You may.
Or do you want?
Mr. Womack?
Do you want the specific reasons listed within the...
I would like your recommendation as far as which ones.
I could do that, I mean, you were, I think, on the right point, that we should probably give a reason, and of course, staff is not opposed to going back to Steel Patriots with the reasons I've understood the board to have, and try to negotiate perhaps a new submission. So, this is Section 52-5 in City's Orifices, number one being that the event appears to be unlawful, I don't believe that's the case. Number two, whether it appears a special event may be conducted in a manner so as to cause a breach of the peace, well, possible, I don't think that's ever been the case in the past. Whether the special event will unnecessarily interfere with the public use of the streets, sidewalks, parks, and other public areas, I think that's the number one reason, considering the huge project that we're gonna have in downtown, I think without more, that would be a sufficient reason, whether, at least as presented. Whether the special event appears to be primarily for commercial purposes, that's also a possibility, but debatable. Whether the special event may have some special right or priority under the law, I don't think that applies. Whether the special event would in any way be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare, again, debatable, we've had a significant number of people who complained about certain issues that may affect public health, safety, and welfare, but I think as presented, number three would probably be the best option, if we can back it up with facts.
Good. Further discussion? Commissioner Petry?
Would you just repeat number three, then, if that's what we're gonna...
Whether the special event will unnecessarily interfere with the public use of streets, sidewalks, parks, and/or other public areas.
Commissioner?
This is just a, throwing it out here, just trying to ask, do we know what percentage of the downtown parking is actually going to be under construction? Is it like, does that take up 40% of the total parking? It's a huge parking lot that's going to be under construction, which means that there's just nowhere else for anybody to go. Do we have that number, or is that just...
It's a good question. Mr. Womack, do you have an answer for that question?
No, I don't believe we've ever calculated the number. Obviously, there are two major parking lots in our downtown area, the larger of the two will be basically incapacitated throughout the entire time. Also, the north side of Nepicing Street, which also has on-street parking, will be affected as well, so I'd say a significant portion, but I don't have a percentage.
Any further discussion?
One question. Will Park Street then be out of commission too? That, that whole Park Street, like, we gotta close it down, so no motorcycles, traffic, anybody can't use that?
Mr. Womack?
Thank you. Yes, at some point, the Park Street will be negatively affected, I don't know if it'll be completely closed down, because normally what happens is, you know, they close it for a day, and then it's open for a month, and then they close for a day, et cetera, but it would obviously significantly impact traffic patterns in the downtown. And just, I want to clarify, I think what we're talking about is the current event as presented. There may be an option later on to say that this doesn't affect a future application.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We're ready to vote? The...
Sorry, just to clarify, so that, that is added to the original motion, correct?
What?
The point of denial.
Yeah, the reason for the denial.
I would recommend that the motion maker add that, the reason is the reason for denial.
I'm the motion maker. Please add that for the reason for denial.
The impact on the streets and parking lots.
Yes.
I'm sorry, could you please repeat that, I did not hear you say that.
We will add to that motion, the reason for us denying the Steel Patriots event is because of the parking lot situation and...
The impact.
And the impact it would have on the streets. Construction.
Very well, thank you.
It is construction, correct?
Mm-hmm. Okay. We had a second.
I was saying, thank you, sorry.
Oh, I second it.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner McCarthy. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, put forth by Commissioner Glickman, seconded by Commissioner McCarthy, to... Oh, Brady, second?
I withdraw my second.
You withdraw your second? Okay.
I withdraw my second.
Okay. The motion is to deny, by Commissioner Glickman, seconded by Commissioner McCarthy, to deny the application by Steel Patriots Friday Night Bikes Special Event for the reason of impact on the street and the construction that will be taking place during that timeframe. Are we ready to vote? One more question, discussion.
So does that mean they can't come back still with something different for us during this period, like, next meeting or whatever? I mean, are we just saying no, or can we work with them?
Mr. Womack, it's my understanding that you said that, as we give them this reason, that you and the staff were more than happy to go back and negotiate and ensure that the considerations, specifically that one, but I'm sure that you had some other in that list that also could be applicable.
Yes.
But you were willing to go back and the staff to make those arrangements and come back with a new application?
Yeah. But just for Ms. Petrie's clarification, because I'm understanding the motion, it's as presented.
Yeah.
So this is being denied, but a future one could be approved.
Correct. Does that answer your question? Future one can be presented. This one's being denied? Yep. Okay. Commissioner Brady?
Are we directing staff to do so?
He, in his first comment, when he was asked a question, that was his statement. And I was making sure I understood it clearly and allowing him to answer that. Mr. Womack, do you want to elaborate?
I also don't need specific direction from the board to do that. I can do that alone.
Can one other person go with him? Can you go with him as the mayor? Because you know the concerns. We've all discussed it, and it's in our packet. Could you go with Mr. Womack to discuss what we'd like to see, so that that special event application, you know, is probably, could be better chance of having it accepted?
That's a good question. It's directed at me. Before I answer it, Mr. Brady?
Well, I would just, I object to that, that I would not want to send one person, a member of the commission, for the same reason as I stated before. If he makes these promises to them, that it'll get approved, and then we deny it, they'll, I mean, that's a liability on us.
I wasn't inferring any promises made, just discussion. I don't think any promises are made till it's brought back to us and accepted or not. I just think two ears, two sets of ears are helpful in negotiating. I think it's smart.
I'm just worried about the liability, and I'm feeling rushed into the decision, and I don't want to, you know, I don't want to rush anything. You know, it's a big liability.
To talk?
That's not the motion on the table, anyways. It's a good discussion, unless we plan to change the motion. The motion is to deny the event application as it is for the reasons specified about the construction and the impact on the streets, with the understanding that Mr. Womack and his staff do not need any further direction to negotiate on behalf of the concerns that have been expressed, that he fully understands, if he has any other questions, he can ask. I... That being said, if there's any further discussion, we can move to vote. The role, please.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Glickman?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the zoning G3 Ordinance Text Amendments, Article 713, 715, 716, and 717. Commissioner Atwood?
I would like to introduce the zoning ordinance text amendments, Articles 7-13, 7-15, 7-16, and 7-17.
This is the introduction. 713, 715, 716, and 717 of the general ordinances of the city appear as proposed. Support? Support by Commissioner Brady? Go.
I don't know if introductions need support.
Okay. All right. All right. So Commissioner Atwood, your introduction.
Yes, could I ask this?
Go ahead.
Clarify the city manager that just the introduction doesn't need a second.
So the custom and tradition of this commission is that it only needs one commissioner to introduce, and then no discussion follows.
Okay.
If Mr. Mayor would allow the item that removed G2, would have modified that to both require a second and discussion and vote prior to moving to a second briefing.
So that modification would have allowed for us to proceed with that second in the motion?
Correct.
Yep. Okay. So right now... You can move forward with the first reading?
Yes, as under sample, motion's been made, and we can move forward.
Yep. Proceed.
Just introduction.
Okay. All right, so then we're done, moving on. Contract Assessment Administration Services LLC Assessor Services. Is there a suggested motion here? Commissioner Petrie?
I move that we approve the three-year contract with Assessment Administration Services LLC for the assessing services beginning December 1st as presented, and authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Motion is made by Commissioner Petrie, supported by Commissioner Glickman, to approve the three-year contract with Assessment Administration Services LLC for assessing services beginning December 1st, 2025, as presented, and authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we can take a vote?
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Motion carries. We move on to item G5. Resolution, the Mishda 2026 Housing Choice Voucher Administration Contract Extension. Is there a suggested motion on the table? Commissioner Atwood?
I make the motion to adopt the resolution for the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, Division of Rental Assistance and Homeless Solutions Housing Voucher Program Amendment/Extension for Housing Choice Voucher Administration, 2026.
Support. Commissioner Petrie? There's a motion on the table, put forth by Commissioner Atwood, supported by Commissioner Petrie, to adopt the resolution for the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, Division of Rental Assistance and Homeless Solutions Housing Choice Voucher Program Amendment Extension for Housing Choice Voucher Administration, 2026. Any further discussion on this? Commissioner Petrie?
Can you ask Ms. Saldonsky to just explain? This is just, like, we're renewing, and the vouchers are not new vouchers, but, like, existing?
Yes, please.
For an explanation, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
Yes, please.
Yes, this is just an extension of a contract. It's the third extension. No additional vouchers, and in effect, they've kind of pulled back some funding. So right now, we're not actively pulling new vouchers. So it's just to maintain our administration through 2026.
Thank you. Any additional questions or discussion? The role, please.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Glickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. We move on to Agenda Item G6. Mishda Independent Contractor Staff Contracts for 2026. Commissioner Petrie?
I move that we approve the independent contractor contracts for 2026 that coincide with the city LaPierre Mishda HVC Administration 2026 Contract Extension, and authorize the mayor and the city manager to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
There's a motion put forth by Commissioner Petrie, supported by Commissioner Glickman, to approve the independent contractor contracts for 2026 that coincide with the city of LaPierre Mishda HCV Administration 2026 Contract Extension, and authorize the mayor and city manager to sign all necessary documents. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the role.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Motion carries. With that, we move on to Agenda Item H, the city manager's report. We're going to look at H1, the 425.
No, we get G7.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Thank you. That note was on the previous page. We move to G7. Let me find the page that was on here. This is the official 2026 meeting calendar. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Petrie?
I'd like to make a motion to remove the meeting calendar from facility hours and approve the meeting calendar for 2026, and make changes to facilities. I would like to be open on Fridays, have the meetings separate from the hours, and then continue with the schedule that they have, their 410s, but the city hall be open five days a week for the public.
Is there support?
Support.
There's a motion by Commissioner Petrie, supported by Commissioner Glickman, to separate the 2026 meeting calendar from the 2026 facility calendar, and to adjust the facility calendar to be open on Friday. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Brady?
So, so, just help me understand. The facilities calendar, which is the days off, like, the holidays? Is that what you're trying to separate from?
The meeting.
And then the meeting calendar? What's the change?
Go ahead, Ms.
I'm fine approving the meeting calendar. I'm not... And they're on the same paper, that's why I wanted it separated. I'm not in favor of the city facility calendar being approved as written.
Commissioner Atwood?
You don't approve the national holidays for our staff that's been in the contract?
I do approve of the holidays. There's some that...
That's all that's on here?
Well, no, there's days before.
No.
Commissioner Petrie, could you please explain what days you're referring to?
You said Fridays. There's no Friday on here.
No, I'd like it to be open on Fridays.
That's a whole different topic.
Okay, so... So my thing is...
And it's not on our agenda, either.
Well, this is. So if we approve the meeting calendar?
Which is holidays, that is in the contracts that we've approved, if I'm not correct, with...
Commissioner Petrie?
I just have a question.
I'm not trying to be a pain in the butt, I just...
I just, I guess I need to ask Mike, because he's the manager.
Okay.
This holiday schedule did not come through the commission. We never said...
What is your question, Mike?
My question is, did this get approved with the union without first coming through us?
Okay. Mr. Womack, question?
I don't understand the question. You said, this get approved?
The facility hours and vacation time.
So, I mean, the city has adopted the holidays that are approved for staff. You know, we have, I guess, adapted to that, considering the council approved 410 work week. So I'd say yes on both accounts, but I kind of get where you're going to.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Womack, thank you for that answer. Which of the two of you was first? Commissioner Brady?
I guess I would argue that this isn't germane to... An amendment to what we were actually voting on. It's like, we were going to vote on our meeting calendar, and then all of a sudden, now we're voting on days the building is going to be open. I think it needs to be germane. I think it needs to apply to what we said we were going to talk about.
I think if... I'm not going to put it back to Commissioner Petrie. I think I'm going to try to interject what I think the communication gap right now is. I think Commissioner Petrie has a concern that we're not open on Fridays, and that directly affects the meeting schedule as it is presented, which also includes the holiday schedule for the facility. So there's two distinct schedules here on one piece of paper called meeting schedule. Holidays are not part of the meeting schedule, they're part of the facility and staff schedule. And so what she's trying to say is that she would like to see something changed in the future that directly affects the schedule, and she doesn't want to approve the schedule as it is until that's discussed. Do I understand you correctly, Commissioner Petrie?
I am fine approving the meeting schedule. That is fine. This is on one piece of paper, so it confused me, and it looks like we're approving the facilities' schedule, too.
Okay. And I believe that's germane to the topic, because it's on the piece of paper that we're going to approve or not approve. The facility schedule directly affects this holiday schedule that's on a meeting schedule that we're talking about.
Man, who sets the facility schedule?
That's a good question. Mr. Womack, can you answer that?
I can't immediately. Obviously, this requires some research.
Okay. Mr. Womack, what would you propose, since you have to do some research here, in terms of the presented motion that's on the table at the moment? Would it make sense to keep it the way it is, or make an adjustment?
I mean, I'm seeing both sides of the issue. I think we've got some concerns that, you know, we're already in the first meeting of December. We're going to have to meet in January at some point, right? The traditional schedule is that we meet on the first and third Mondays, right? I think we can continue that. I'm not sure if the board needs a motion on that, or if we can bring it up at the next meeting. But I also agree that this is maybe not the time or place to make a motion to say, well, the staff's just going to start working on Fridays. I think that's going to require a lot more study on what the impacts are going to be. Maybe divorce those two and move forward with the approval, at least, of the board side of things, and I guess continue the discussion moving forward.
As I understand it, your recommendation and preference aligns with what I believe the motion is on the table at the moment, to divorce the two and approve the meeting and table the other for future discussion.
It's not my preference, but it's the, we would recommend moving forward to, I think, fulfill what Ms. Petrie is looking for.
Okay. All right. So no change to the motion on the table?
I...
Commissioner?
I believe the motion has to be read, because I believe that there was a section of verbiage talking about the city facilities. And the reality is that that might have to be amended to say that we move to only approve the LaPierre City Commission official meeting calendar, and we separate the city facilities calendar from that approval.
Yeah. Support. Support? Okay. All right. So first, we need to rescind the... Commissioner Atwood?
There's already a motion on the table.
Right.
That's where...
You can't make another motion.
To amend?
I was just clarifying what I thought it should be amended to. I did not say, I move. I was just clarifying what I thought. We had to reread it, and that somehow it had to be amended to say that we're separating the city meetings from the city facilities' calendar for the approval vote. That was my suggestion, that it be amended. After that, it's up to everybody else to do what they have to do, I think.
So with that being said, you know, one moment. Commissioner Brady, I'll get right to you as soon as I make the point that we need to rescind the initial motion that I think you presented.
Or can I amend it?
You supported. Or you can amend, you can make a change of your motion.
It would be easier if I amended, say it differently.
Madam Clerk?
I would recommend that you postpone it, and we give you a different calendar for next week. You know, the one that you get every time I print your agenda that's on the, looks like a grid?
Yeah.
You can use that as your calendar. And then the facility is not listed on that. You can talk about that at a later date.
Thank you.
So rescind what I said?
Rescind your motion? Who is your supporter?
Support was Commissioner Glickman.
If your supporter, I would withdraw the motion.
Okay.
If your supporter agrees.
Hmm, okay.
Okay. Motion withdrawn. Do we have...
And then postpone it to the next regular meeting.
Thank you. Do we have...
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a new motion on the table to consider?
I move that we postpone it then, so that we have the right piece of paper. Postpone it to the next meeting.
Support.
Support. Motion put forth by Commissioner Petrie, supported by Commissioner Glickman, to postpone the calendar to the next meeting, the official 2026 meeting calendar to the next meeting, December 15th. Any further discussion? Commissioner Brady, you did have your hand up at one point. I think we got past that. Okay. Seeing no other discussion, take the roll.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Motion carries. The, that was G seven, so now we move on to agenda item H, City Managers' Report, H1 to 425 Agreement Amendment with Mayfield Township Parcel ID 014-031-003-12. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Petrie?
I move that we set a public hearing at the next, we set a public hearing at the meeting January 19th, or as soon thereafter, as may be heard regarding an amendment to the existing 425 agreement between the City of Lapeer and Mayfield Township, which would add parcel ID 014-031-003-12 into the existing 425 agreement.
Support.
We have a motion put forth by Commissioner Petrie and supported by Commissioner Glickman to set a public hearing at the January 19, 2025 meeting as soon thereafter, as may be heard regarding an amendment to the existing 425 agreement between the City of Lapeer and Mayfield Township, which would add parcel ID 014-031-003-12 into the existing 425 agreement. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Atwood?
So, how do we postpone something or move it to a meeting that has not been approved yet?
I'm not clear on your question.
We haven't approved that meeting yet. We just moved to...
The motion that's being put forth is to set the public hearing for...
January 16th, that we have not approved, that we're gonna meet that day.
If we come back on the December 15th and don't approve that meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Ms. Petrie, staff, myself, asked for this to be set at the next available regular meeting. Could you just explain why you're setting for January 15th?
Yeah, I felt that a large portion of the people that may want to be at that hearing are retired or senior citizens, and I just wanted the holidays done and over with, so that we could have those who wanted to be here be here on the 19th. That's why I picked the second meeting instead of the first meeting. I just think...
Mr. Mayor? Commissioner Brady?
If we would have approved it last meeting, they could have been here tonight.
Commissioner Atwood?
I guess my question was never answered. How do you set a public hearing for a meeting that we haven't approved? And this would be the, we did not set the public hearing last meeting, so we're dragging our feet again and setting a meeting that we have not even approved yet.
Commissioner Petrie?
I changed my motion at the recommendation of our clerk, because she said we had a different paper that it wouldn't be on there. I think we're gonna approve the meetings.
You don't know that.
Okay.
Commissioner McCarthy?
This would be, if, one, we were going to approve the meetings tonight, but we were, we were gonna approve the meetings, just not the city facilities. We didn't want it in there. We didn't want there to be an assumption that that was being approved at the same time. So, that being said, you're gonna be, I mean, okay, we're gonna be pretty confident it's gonna be approved. However, if you read those meetings, that the 19th is a holiday, and so we would be deferring Monday, January 19th, to reschedule for Tuesday, January 20th. So, if we are going to move it to January, the second meeting, the most likely date would be the 20th, not the 19th. Just making that clarity, so that we have it based on the calendar from next week.
So, I could just say...
Yes.
So, can I just say second meeting?
Yes.
Second meeting.
Madam Clerk, a question of procedure. Since we've been rescinding a lot of motions tonight, would it be sufficient for Ms. Petrie to amend her motion to use the verbiage, "The second meeting of January," rather than January, the 19th or the 20th, according to the schedule that hasn't been approved at this time? Or would you like her to withdraw her motion and start over for the record?
She's saying either one would be mine.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Brady?
I've been told repeatedly that I'm not allowed to amend motions in a subsidiary way, even though I feel that Robert's Rules is very clear, giving me the position to do that. And I've been told repeatedly, not, that I'm not allowed to do that, that we have to get somebody to rescind their second and their motion and start over. I've been told that repeatedly.
Yep. We've talked about that several times. I agree with you, and I believe at this point, the rescinding of motions has become a matter of custom, without observing that Robert's Rules does support subsidiary motions. But if we understand Robert's Rules' Customs, we know that custom can't supersede something that's already in place. So, while it's acceptable, while it's not being challenged, if you want to challenge it right now, tonight, and say, "We shouldn't be following custom. We should be following the rule that allows for subsidiary motions," then we can go ahead and move on to a subsidiary motion.
I've challenged it repeatedly, and I feel that my interjection in the debate right now was sufficient challenge.
Okay.
I'm gonna rescind that. And who seconded it?
Rescind?
Okay.
And I make a motion to hold this public hearing on the second meeting of January 2026.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I said...
Commissioner McCarthy? There's a motion on the table, put forth by Commissioner Petrie, supported by Commissioner McCarthy, to set a public hearing at the second January meeting in 2026 as soon thereafter, as may be heard regarding an amendment to the existing 425 agreement between the City of Lapeer and Mayfield Township, which would add parcel ID 014-031-003-12 into the existing 425 agreement. Any further discussion? Commissioner Atwood?
Do we know when Mayfield Township has this on their agenda and if they set the public hearing?
Mr. Womack, do you have an answer for that?
I do not believe they've set the hearing at this time. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Petrie?
Do we know if, do we have to have ours before Mayfield, after Mayfield? Doesn't matter. There's no rules. They can, we can have ours. They can have theirs. We don't have to coincide.
Mr. Womack?
There is no rule regarding who holds first or second, only that the public hearing has to meet with all over the floor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The roll, please.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item H2. Discussion Regarding Commission Seating Arrangements. This was an amended item, I'm, or, to also include action, so we need a motion on the table first before we can deliberate. Is there a motion? Commissioner McCarthy?
I move that the city commission seating on the dais shall be under the authority of the duly-elected city mayor to be assigned now and at future dates with no limitations, with assignments announced at least 24 hours prior to the next scheduled meeting, allowing any city commissioner to appeal the seat assignment to the full commission for a majority vote, while the mayor retains the default power for a tie vote, but lets the commission overrule in extreme cases. This rule would be added to the Rules and Procedures Manual moving forward with these edits to the manual to be provided to all city commissioners for our next scheduled city commission meeting on December 15th, 2025.
Support. Supported by Commissioner Brady. There's a motion on the table, put forth by Commissioner McCarthy, supported by Commissioner Brady, to to put the city commission seating on the dais shall be under the authority of the duly-elected city mayor to be assigned now and at future dates with no limitations, with assignments announced at least 24 hours prior to the next scheduled meeting, allowing any city commissioner to appeal the seating assignment to the full commission for a majority vote, while the mayor retains the default power for a tie vote, but lets the commission overrule in extreme cases. This rule should be added to the Rules and Procedure Manual moving forward with these edits to the manual to be provided to all city commissioners for our next scheduled city commission meeting on December 15th, 2025. Any further discussion?
That was an awful lot of words for you to get exactly right. Do you guys have these written down in front of you?
I actually do.
She printed them and brought it to the meeting and passed it to me and said, "I'm going to make a motion, and I'd like you to read it accurately."
I don't have one.
I just want to make sure that we're not, this is the hearings of any violations of the open meeting agenda.
I would also like one.
I don't have one, but I apologize.
Can we get copies made?
Sure, I can write it up and send it to you, or if you'd like...
We have a copy machine.
Well, she can read it.
I would like to have a, you have a, she has a copy. I would like a copy.
Would you mind getting us a copy of Commissioner McCarthy's?
The language of this is very important.
Remo, let me grab that for you. While we're waiting for that, I will, I will recognize in a moment Commissioner Atwood, but I will, I would like to interject to something here that I think is a possible point of order inside of this particular motion. As I'm reading it, I can see that there is a motion put forth here to add rules to our Rules and Procedure Manual moving forward, which, correct me if I'm wrong, I can ask our attorney, but I believe that we need a two-thirds vote for such a motion, which is, which is fine, if that's what you, I mean, we need to go forward. And I feel like there's two motions inside of here.
I think so, so I would like...
Commissioner McCarthy?
May I amend?
There was one motion.
No.
But I feel like there's two separate issues here in this motion.
It's been supported.
I rescind my motion.
You cannot do that unless he rescinds his second.
It belongs to the floor at this point.
It's in front of us. It's open for discussion right now. While we're waiting for a copy, it's open for discussion. That's, that's just my observation of this reading of this, this, this print out here, and I'm curious what other people have to think about that.
Well, I'm curious what the public thinks, because they have no idea what we're talking about, because this was not in our agenda, in our packet. We have a legal opinion with no information other than the legal opinion.
Yeah, and the agenda was amended to include this topic for discussion.
But what about the information?
Thank you.
I mean, that was a pretty elaborate motion, without it being on our agenda, which, as a legislator up here, would make me, that's a red flag, that something happened outside of a city meeting.
A lot of things happened outside of the city meeting. You're right.
Well, can we let the public know?
We could bring all of that, yeah.
Absolutely.
And that's what Commissioner Brady had suggested when they made the motion to amend all of this.
Well, you ran on transparency, so I would appreciate it if you would be transparent and let the public know what the heck we're talking about.
What do you want me to do to make that transparent? Print out all of the emails?
Read your emails and read them.
Distribute copies?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a connection?
Commissioner McCarthy?
I'm going to give just a brief clarity, then he can read whatever his heart desires. There was a, there was a request, a, I would like to implement, was, I believe, the words on the email.
It was a directive.
It was not at the time.
Mr. Mayor, can we maybe go word for word? Just, I just, I feel like the best thing for us to do is to just sunshine this.
Right now, Commissioner McCarthy has the floor. The both of you do not have the floor.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Commissioner McCarthy, while you're gathering yourself, I will recognize the clerk.
Because this is a change to the rules and procedures of the commission, it's gonna require a two-thirds vote, and it should be on the agenda prior to being voted on.
And I would like to amend it, just to be the...
Which is precisely what I pointed out was wrong with this, right? And so, I'm gonna stick with that. Thank you for, thank you for supporting that. And so, we're gonna allow Commissioner McCarthy to gather herself and see whether she wants to rescind or...
I have asked to rescind, and I've been denied to rescind, because, again, it's my second meeting. I'm trying to work through it. I get it. I should be perfect, but I'm human. I would like to rescind my amendment, or I'd like to rescind my motion, and I'd like to restate, no, who seconded it, they gotta rescind it too.
That would be Commissioner Brady.
I do not.
But he won't rescind it. Do I still get it rescinded if he won't rescind it?
You do not. You vote on it.
Okay, so now we have to go to vote whether or not I can amend it, or whether we accept this.
You do not. You vote on, you vote on the motion.
Okay, can we vote on the motion? Is that, I'm not asking you to do something. I'm just trying to understand.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
We're gonna, we're going to continue with the deliberation of your motion, since it's unable to be rescinded.
So, can I? Can I then go through this? I'm just trying to give you back from...
Please.
There was a, there was a request that we perhaps reconsider, that we reconsider seating up here. We move it around. And for clarification, it's a housekeeping. It's moving people around. I'm not, I'm not attached to this chair, not attached to this position. This is movable. So, there was a suggestion. It said, "I would like to implement," was the very first email. I have a copy of the emails, and I've read them, so that's what I'm going by. And so, they asked for seating changes to be made. I don't, I, somewhere in here, it tells me where I might sit. I'm not sure where. After that, a lot of confusion came up, a lot of, "Why are we asking for this?" Whatever. I don't see those emails. We're not allowed to share emails among all of us, so there is a series of communications that we individually can't see from one another. But in a response to that, the, someone then, the mayor, again, brand new, a little frustrated, a little razzled, said, "I think my, I think my directive was clear." And he used the word directive. He did. He put it right in there, guys. Honest to God. It's in there. It's not hidden. His intent wasn't to be, he was like, "I think my directions, I think my thought process, I think what I was trying to communicate was clear." Did he use the wrong language? Probably. He's brand new. But I will tell you, in the last meeting, in this meeting, he's been held to very, very high standards with very, very little grace. And I just am saying that what you're about here is a bunch of emails that went through with clarity, ad nauseam, about us moving where we sit along the dais. And let's just add one more piece, and then I'll stop. When the three commissioners, Mr. Brady, Ms. Glickman, and Ms. Petrie came in, they were asked where they would like to sit, based on the seats that were available. When I came in, there was only one seat. They just kind of put me here. But previously, the one before that, where we had Commissioner Stroh and Commissioner Catan and all these other commissioners, they moved around on the dais. They were not glued in perpetual, you know, forever in that spot. I just, I do not understand how making a suggested seating change is this, it's just to me, I don't understand the depths and the commitment people have to stick to their seat. I'm not getting it. And that's how simple it seems, it's just moving seats. I'm done.
Thank you. Commissioner Brady?
Well, I guess I would argue that, you know, based on that first email, that I think we really should read. The main seating change is to take Mr. Womack out of his central position, and I would argue... and I would argue... In the first email, okay? We're going to read these.
Commissioner Brady?
This is a reorganization only.
I'm going to read it, Commissioner Brady.
Can I have my copy back with my highlight on it?
It's what you asked.
Can I have my highlight... Highlight copy back?
I'm going to read it.
Do you have a fresh one? You want a fresh one, though?
No.
I gave him my highlighted copy, I want my highlighted copy back.
Mr. Mayor?
It's okay.
You're a bully.
Mr. Mayor, it's for the...
Commissioner McCarthy?
I don't believe that anybody was moved off the... Nobody was moved off the dais and put off in the floor or set over there, nobody. Everybody's still sitting up.
Staying on the dais. So for additional context, this is the email, I'm going to read it. This is my words. It was addressed to Mr. Womack, Ms. Sanchez, and the commissioners. And it reads, "Dear Mr. Womack, Ms. Sanchez, and commissioners, as we begin this new term, I would like to implement a small procedural adjustment to the seating sequence at the dais for our upcoming commission meetings. To help the public clearly distinguish between the elected decision-making body and the administrative staff in advisory roles, I am proposing that the mayor and full commission sit together as a unified deliberative body, with the city manager and city attorney seated adjacent to the commission. This arrangement reflects the roles established in the charter and rules of procedure. The revised seating order from left to right would be over here, from the public-facing view, would be as follows. The city manager, Mike Womack, Commissioner Lenny McCarthy, right where she's at, Commissioner Melissa Petrie, right where she's at, Mayor Pro Tem Joshua Atwood at the time, right where I'm at. Mayor Jeremy Hing, right where Mr. Womack is at, at the moment, Commissioner Linda Glistman, right where she's at, Commissioner Stefan Brady, right where he's at, and the city attorney would then move to the remaining seat on the opposite end. This is a reorganization only, no one will be removed from the dais, no operational changes are required beyond the seating adjustment itself. Mr. Womack, when convenient, please coordinate with Ms. Sanchez to arrange this updated seating sequence for next regular commission meeting. Ms. Sanchez, thank you in advance for your assistance in preparing this dais according to your... Part of your normal meeting setup. If anyone has questions, concerns, or suggestions regarding this adjustment, please let me know. The goal is clarity, transparency, and public understanding of our respective roles. Thank you all for your cooperation."
Mr. Mayor, sent at what time, on what day?
This is Sunday at eight forty PM, Sunday the sixteenth.
So, I'm sorry, just to clarify, just less than twenty-four hours before the meeting that it was supposed to take place?
Yep.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And and so the public understands it is exactly as Commissioner McCarthy has described, it's not glued to the table. It's that simple. Twenty-four hours, I think, is sufficient for a proposal. It... In my final email, because this went on for quite some time, back and forth, and... And some contention. And in my final email, I just said, "Look, this..." This was at Mike's discretion.
Mr. Mayor, I need you to read from the email, not interject your own thoughts and interpretations now.
So we can... We can... We can get there. Commissioner Brady, please don't interrupt me. And and it really, truly is, it's at his discretion. I spoke to the city attorney about this at the conclusion of the last meeting on November seventeenth, and Mr. Francis had said that if it really gets to a boiling point of conflict and disagreement, the best thing that you could do is bring it to an agenda item and have the commission vote on it. And even further, if you feel the need, we can do an official legal opinion at the request of Mr. Womack.
Mr. Mayor?
If necessary. Ultimately, that official legal opinion was requested by Commissioner Brady, and and that was alluded to earlier in the meeting. Commissioner Brady was first.
Mr. Mayor, I challenge your timeline here. Wednesday, you sent another email demanding and reprimanding staff for not having made that move. And it wasn't until afternoon on Wednesday that I requested that this get put on the agenda. You doubled down, you, in fact, you tripled down. I think we need to go through the entirety of these emails, because my rebuttal came at ten thirty at night. Admittedly, I use ChatGPT to fire off a couple of quick ideas, but those ideas are as follows. City of LaPierre Charter Commission and Rules, relevant sections regarding the mayor's procedural authority annotated, Charter subsection four point five, the duties of the mayor. He shall be the presiding officer of the commission. And then, correctly, in an ellipsis, there's some misinterpretation that says, "He shall have no administrative authority." When I read that, it's because all administrative authority falls into the hands of Mr. Womack. He shall be the presiding officer. Do I have the floor?
Because you are quoting ChatGPT that inserted law into our book.
We can check the char... Please check the charter.
And I... I... I challenged you on that, and that's when you confessed to me that you used ChatGPT, and that there could be inaccuracies there.
Highlighted on your... On the document that I gave you, it's the correct citation of Charter four point five.
What you just said to the public was that you correctly interpreted this law, and this is in quotations, direct quotations, as if it was coming from the law, and it does not.
Who was this email sent to?
It was sent to me.
And Mr. Womack, solely. So you sent an email to everybody, telling us what's going to happen. I sent an email just to you, "Hey, heads up, I don't think you can do that." And if we can get a weigh-in from the attorney, does he have the power to change seats?
We're pretty clear in our opinion that there, it could go from the charter to the rules and procedures, there's nothing in those. It would then go to Robert's Rules, there is a...
Custom.
And I believe there has been a custom for the mayor and the mayor pro tem to sit next to each other. No custom anywhere else, so if you want to make a rule, if you want to change the custom, it would be if a majority vote, as was stated earlier, if you'd like to make a change to rules and procedures, that's two-thirds vote.
So my point was...
You have the ability to do that, but no, currently, there is no custom. There is no...
So my point was, no, you don't have the authority to just assign seats.
Which is your interpretation of the law.
Does he have the authority to assign seats?
In my opinion, no.
So it's also our city attorney's opinion?
And as stated earlier, the opinion is advisory, and doesn't have to be adhered to, we can vote amongst ourselves how we would like that to go, and we did.
The discussion at hand.
We already did.
Well, you're... See, you're challenging that I gave an incorrect opinion, but then the city attorney agreed with that opinion. And when it comes back to, okay, so there's... There's more in here. But then on two... On Monday morning, you want to debate specifically me. You said, "Thank you, Commissioner Brady, for the citations." Nobody else up here got that email. I sent it just to you. You're then replying all to everybody, debating me about something that will come before the body, but is not before the body. Okay, so we're in debate. That's why this needs to be read. You... You challenged that assumption, that's fine, I'm silent.
I cause a question.
And then Mr. Womack sends you an email that says, "Please don't email the majority of the commission, that could be seen as a violation." You really don't want me to get to this third email, I can tell.
I can read the email for myself, out loud, if... If I so wish.
The third email, please.
But what we have here is the third call to question in the meeting. The first two I allowed for continued deliberation, and I'm not going to continue, we've... We've gone on long enough. So it was supported by Commissioner Petrie. I'm sorry, Ms. McCarthy, we're not going to deliberate anymore. Can we please have the motion that's on the table called back?
Is it this motion printed here?
Yes.
That's all I have?
Yeah, because he wants to say.
All read back.
Because he won't rescind it.
I guess I have it here, too, as well, it was copied.
Will you have a gentleman in the back with his hands up?
Okay. Is that Mr.?
He's recording the meetings.
Yes, please.
I just want you to know, this is the longest we've gone, and it started hiccuping now eleven minutes ago, I'm sorry, nine minutes ago, I've been trying to fix it, I can't. So if you want, the only for sure way to get it fixed is for me to stop and restart a meeting, or we can keep going, and maybe it's recording, maybe it's not.
How much time do you think you need to get this corrected?
Ninety seconds.
All right, we can... We can give you that time. Please let us know when you're ready.